Good evening. Welcome to our June 21st, 2022 City Council meeting. 7:02 PM, meeting is now in session. Thank you for being here. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Samuel Martinez from Amazing Love Ministries, and Councilman Wu will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Fathers, we gather here this evening to exercise our rights as citizens. Father, we thank you for the American, our American soldiers, men and women that have served and have given their lives for the freedoms that we so richly enjoy. We ask you to give wisdom to the City Council, the mayor, and all those that are in authority, all those that work for this city. Father, we pray for our police officers. Having seen what recently happened in the city of El Monte, we pray for the protection of all of our, all our police officers, Father, in our city. We pray for our schools to be safe havens. We pray for the protection of your angels around all of our elementary junior high and high schools in our city. Father, we thank you and we praise you that you direct the decisions that are made this evening. God bless America, God bless West Covina, and we speak, Father, your peace and your grace over our city, peace over the borders of our city, peace over our neighborhoods, and we thank you and we praise you for this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Everyone, please put your right hand to your heart and face the flag and follow my lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilmember Tabatabai?
Present.
Councilman Wu?
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Diaz?
Here.
Mayor Castellanos?
Here.
City Attorney, is there anything to be reported out of closed session?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the presentations part of our agenda. We've got a certificate of recognition honoring the graduates of Mount SAC Early College Academy. We have Mr. Gary Chow, trustee and vice president of the board, come to the microphone, please. Mount SAC partners with West Covina Unified to provide transferable college credit courses that high school students are eligible to take. Students take college classes while also enrolled in high school through a program called Dual Enrollment. Early College Academy students want to get a head start on college and earn credits toward a college degree or certificate while also strengthening transcripts and academic performance. Students who have completed their lower division general ed requirements will enter the university and be able to focus on their major and upper division general ed requirements, saving time and money. And I will let you take it from here and introduce the students.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Castellanos. My name is Gary Chow. Next to me is also trustee Robert Hidalgo. We both represent the cities of West Covina. We're here to give recognition to two students who graduated from the Early Academy, as the mayor said. They graduated with their high school diploma and an AA at the same time. And for me, that's quite an accomplishment, considering it took me nine years to get one bachelor's degree. But I'm gonna step away from the mic, and I'm gonna let trustee Hidalgo talk a little bit about the program, and then I'm gonna come back, okay?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council for having us here tonight. I just wanna echo the words from my colleague trustee Chow and thank our, actually, some of our Mount SAC staff is here, if they can raise their hands, they're over here, and they helped too.
They do a lot of the work in helping to create the partnership that we've created with
West Covina Unified. West Covina Unified was the first school district that Mount SAC partnered with for Early College Academy, and we've really, you know, they, they just have done a great job. But tonight, we're here to recognize Angelina and Anisha for their accomplishments. To be able to accomplish six years' worth of education, you know, in a four-year time span is pretty impressive and pretty amazing. So we are proud trustees to be able to come to you tonight to just honor them and their hard work and everything that they've done. I know if you couldn't be here, but I do, I do wanna take the time to thank Angelina and Anisha and congratulate them on their great accomplishments. So congratulations.
Thank you for that.
I'm gonna try to keep this to one minute here. Last Thursday, you know, I'm very proud of these high school students, but last Thursday, we had a high school graduation at Mount SAC, and probably you're wondering, why do we have a, a high school graduation at a community college? Well, this is from our School of Continuing Education, and I am equally proud of these individuals, because these are high school dropouts. These are about 75 to 80 students graduated with, the commencement list was over 300 students, and we, what we did is we combined the last three years of high school graduates, and they all were invited to come and walk at the Sofia Clark Theater. So, you know, I just wanna say that, you know, this is an exceptional group of two young students, but the typical student at Mount SAC is not this demographic, and the few demographics is about 65% of our students are of Hispanic origin, 20% Asian, 10% white, 5% black, and other. 70% of our students are on some type of financial aid, and, you know, it takes an average student six years to achieve their goal at community college. So this is what we're serving, and for, for me and trustee Hidalgo, we find being a trustee is very fulfilling, because we're dealing with the less privileged segment of society, and we're doing everything we can. So as City Council members, you know, we would appreciate if you could help promote Mount San Antonio College. We, we do not offer any compensation or commission fee, but you would get my, my thanks, and I think some people would say maybe that thanks is priceless, or priceless, okay? So anyway, I'm at the end, and we have the presentation, and I'm, unless you have any questions about the program?
I have no questions. I'd like to invite the students up, and I understand we also have this, an assembly office here, Lisa. I'd like for them to join us at the podium there, too. So come up, please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Is Angelina here? Where's Angelina? Oh, you're Angelina. Well, congratulations from the city of West Covina. We present this certificate of recognition for you. And from Senator Susan Rubio's office, we have a certificate of recognition for you as well. And Anisa, for you as well, we have a certificate of recognition from myself and the council, and the city of West Covina, and from Senator Susan Rubio's office, same thing. Congratulations. If you wouldn't mind, if you two could step into the middle here, and we'll take a photo. Would you, would you, would you like to share anything about your experience or anything you'd like to say?
It's been an amazing experience at Mount SAC Early College Academy. We've had a really supportive group of peers, teachers, staff, and administration. I'm grateful for the opportunity, because, you know, as a first class, we got this opportunity that the past classes have not. I'm going into UC Berkeley as a junior, so I'm really excited about that in the fall, and that's it.
I second that.
Thank you, and...
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth, and I'm here on behalf of the Office of State Senator Josh Newman, and we just wanna offer our congratulations again for your achievements. It's such a great achievement to receive both a diploma and an AA. We're really proud of you, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you both. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
Oh, yeah. Councilman Tony will...
I want to congratulate, okay, Angelina, okay. She was a City Council, she represent me, sit next to me. And I can tell, she's a smart cat, okay? She's so smart, and she go to UC Berkeley. Congratulations, good job.
Thank you, thank you.
The next presentation we have on our agenda is a presentation by the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District on Drought 101 and Conservation Efforts. We have, oh, Tom, Love is already here, you're the general manager.
That's correct, and thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to help share the message. We are asking for conservation and whatever we can do to get the communities to respond, which they will and they have in the past. We appreciate this, this chance to communicate the information with them. I first would wanna share the regrets of Director Katerina Garcia. She was unable to be here tonight, but I did wanna let the council know that we recently changed our division boundaries, and so now the entire city of West Covina is represented by Director Garcia. Director Chavez used to represent a small portion. He now has all the unincorporated areas between West Covina and La Puente. So also, what we do have here today, and if there's specific questions about your, your local water utility and what they're doing and resources they have, I do have Greg Galindo and Craig Gott from Suburban Water Systems here, as well as Jose Martinez from Valley County Water District. So if there's questions later on that I can't answer and they can, we can bring them up here. So there is a presentation, and I don't know if it's, you brought it up?
She's coming.
Okay. But first of all, the first part of this is to make sure everyone knows where our water comes from. Here in the San Gabriel Valley, about 80% of our supply comes from local rainwater and groundwater. It's captured up San Gabriel Canyon by the county and, and behind Morris Dam, San Gabriel Dam, and then released to the Santa Fe Spreading Grounds at the 210 freeway and 605 interchange. Back in May, you probably saw water in those spreading grounds, that was rainwater that was captured and is percolated back into our water supply. And so we're fortunate, that system typically captures nearly 100% of the rainfall that falls upstream of Woody or Narrows Dam, so it's a really robust system. But it's not enough for our, our needs, and so we do import water from two sources, through Metropolitan Water District, from Northern California, the State Water Project, and from the Colorado River through the Metropolitan Colorado River Aqueduct. We normally put most of that water into those same spreading grounds to supplement our groundwater supply. Some of that water comes to us as treated water to a few areas, and currently, that is 100% Colorado River water. So I'm gonna talk to you about how severe this drought is, and then some actions that have been taken at the state level, regionally by Metropolitan Water District and by us here at Upper San Gabriel District to deal with this extreme drought. And it's important to note, it's that state project supplies from Northern California that are critical levels. On the Colorado River system, they are also in, in a very dry conditions, but Metropolitan has invested in programs and systems that has allowed them to put a record amount of swatter stored in their name in Lake Mead. So for Metropolitan, they still have ample Colorado River supplies, they just can't get it to their entire service area. So here's how bad this drought is. It's the worst I've seen in my 40-year career. The last three years in Northern California are the driest on record. We got a tremendous amount of precipitation in Northern California in December of 2021. We thought we had a sigh of relief, but January, February, March, normally we get 50% of our precipitation in those three months, were the driest on record. And so our state project allocation, that's the percentage of its capacity that Metropolitan gets, went from 15% to 5% essentially overnight. And to show you how severe it is, Department of Water Resources' lowest projection for how much water Metropolitan would get from that system over three years was 1 million acre feet. Over the last three years, they're only gonna get 600,000. So it's worse than DWR's worst-case forecast, and that's what we're dealing with and what Metropolitan is dealing with. And if you can go, okay, then our local supplies. This is the Baldwin Park Keywell. You can see it over the last 10 years or so, how it's come up and down with wet years and dry years. And towards the right-hand side of that, you'll see we have been coming down with these dry conditions we've had, and you see that little blip up near the end, that is that water the county released this spring that pushed that key well back up a little bit. But the other thing we've done in when we've had wet years such as 2019 and 2017, that light blue shaded area is imported water we brought in in advance of demand and stored it. So we're using that storage today to help meet our water supply needs. So at the state level, the governor has declared several orders. The most recent is asking for a 20 to 30% voluntary water use reduction, and the State Water Board has issued some new regulations. Some of them aren't so new, but some of them are new. You know, use a shut-off nozzle when you wash your car, don't hose down your driveway, those are older ones. But new ones is prohibited, the irrigation of non-functional turf, and that's turf that's in medians or around a commercial business park that doesn't have a recreation value, it's not somebody's front yard, front yard's okay, but that turf that really serves no purpose but looking green currently is prohibited from receiving water. Next slide. So this is the area of Metropolitan Water District that is infected by the state water project shortage. There's about 6 million people in those dark orange areas. It includes almost the entire San Fernando Valley within the city of Los Angeles. To the west, Las Vergines and Cuyegus Municipal Water Districts, which serve Calabasas, Agora Hills, Thousand Oaks, Simi Valley, and into Ventura County. In the middle is Upper San Gabriel District, here in the San Gabriel Valley. Three valleys, which is our next-door neighbor, only a part of their areas is affected, and that's Laverne and Claremont. And the reason is the rest of their service area has been able to move those Colorado River supplies into their systems. And then farther to the east is the Inland Empire Utilities Agency, the western part of San Bernardino County. So the other part of what Metropolitan did, and you've probably heard a lot in the news about these one-day-a-week water restrictions, and you may have seen that, that Las Vergines Municipal, for the, the most extreme water wasters, is installing flow restrictors. So when Metropolitan took their action on this emergency shortage, is they gave us two opportunities to manage those water supplies. One is we could choose to enforce a one-day-a-week water use, outdoor watering use restriction, or they had a second path, which allows us to live within an allocation limit. And for us, since we have water stored in the ground, we've got some local supplies, the upper district board chose that option, too, and we are asking our communities to conserve 20% and asking our water utilities to restrict outdoor water use to two days a week. So that's, that's the direction we're going in, and this slide talks a little bit about upper district board's actions. We started this in August of 2021, when we moved under our water shortage contingency plan to stage two, that's called, the call for 20% conservation. And then to help our communities respond, we're getting educational and outreach materials out to the communities, and, and we're certainly supporting Metropolitan's programs as well. One of the things we are working on is to deliver Colorado River water to the San Gabriel River, but we need some regulatory approval, and we're working on a mitigation plan to get that regulatory approval, and it looks like we may be, be successful in that within a few months. So as you look at our outreach campaign, you can find a lot of information on, on upperdistrict.org/drought. Metropolitan has rebates, including turf rebate, still is in place, and their website, bewaterwise.com. The other part of this is there's an exemption for hand watering of trees. If you're at one day a week or two days a week, there's an exemption, you can hand water trees, because everyone recognizes it's important, the shade value of the trees, plus, if you're in fire-prone areas, you don't wanna have dry trees around structures. The other new thing we have is a Water Smart Home Kit. It's, it's a, it's a package of materials, low-flow devices, and other resources that homeowners can use to help save water within their home. Right now, we're targeting those kits to disadvantaged communities, but we're working on getting some federal grants to help us bring that out to the rest of our service area. Community outreach booths, we are planning to be, have booths at the Covina Concerts in the Park coming up over the next couple of months. And then, of course, your water retailers, Suburban and Valley County Water District also has resources available to you. I think that may be my last slide. I wanted to cover a lot of material very quickly, and hopefully I did, but be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Mr. Love. Do we have any questions for him? No? Councilman Wu.
Tom, nice to see you again.
Good to see you.
Yeah, and the last time we met at San Gabriel Co., Council of Government, at ENR, and I think I gave you some tough question, okay? And so I'm possible, I have to repeat myself again, a couple issue is, the first issue, I asking about for 70 years, 80 years, okay, we second, we talking about recaptures, okay, the stormwater, okay, why we haven't done anything, okay? And I even mentioned about, okay, 100 years ago, we have, 1930, we have all these visionary people and ready to bring this engineer wonder, okay, bring Colorado River to the, to our Southern California with all this magnificent irrigation, okay? Remember, we talked about that, and I have education by the suburban, okay, water company, they have some education regarding where we drink our water. And we need water to survive, and Southern California is desert, is Mediterranean, very dry, we all know it. So, and West Covina drinking nothing but underground water. So, so I don't know, our underwater, underground water have been sold into all the city, all the area, and right now you want us, okay, conserve the water, so, okay? And if we don't water our lawn, a couple issues, so how, how we capture all this underground water go to refinish into our water table? This is one issue, and second issue is, okay, okay, we, like, couple, ten, five years ago, okay, we do the conservation, and then people reduce the use, and then you raise the price, not only that, because people use less, the pressure of the pipe, okay, cannot handle it, and it, it broke all the places, remember? And we just recently, a month ago, our, outside our, I think, my school?
Mine.
Mine school, we have a major, okay, collapse of one of your pipe, okay? And water goes out like crazy. So, so how it is infrastructure aging pipe, you guys can fix it, can they handle if people really retreat to use, conserve the water? This is the second issue. I think I mentioned to you last time. So, so this couple of issue, okay, I hope you can answer, and to give our resident in West Covina, that basically, we have a lot of hail, and now the wildfire season coming up, okay? And if you want everything brown, okay, and how we control the potentially wildfires, okay, and that, that, we have a couple places, like Gloucester Park, we have almost a catastrophe. So we want to make sure, okay, we don't have all this dry brown and like a torch, okay, and it's going to burn down the structure. So this couple question I have you, is the same question last time I asked you at ENR, so maybe you can answer all these questions again.
Okay, I think there were a lot of questions there, but I'll try and be succinct in my response. So I think you first talked about stormwater capture, and that's part that we need to educate people in the San Gabriel Valley to realize, we have one of the most, most robust stormwater capture systems in, in California here in the San Gabriel Valley. The county's facilities in the canyon, the San Gabriel River, also the Rio Hondo Channel that goes down into Central Basin, so the rainfall that falls in the upper San Gabriel River watershed, and this year it was, we captured 100%. Every drop of rain was captured and put back into the ground. Only when we have extremely wet years, such as 2004, where it was the wettest year in 100 years, did we not capture 100%. That was about a 60% capture. Now, you go towards the ocean, that is not the case. For one thing, the soils are more clay, it's harder to get water into the ground, and all the channels down there are concrete lined. But here in the San Gabriel Valley, we capture 100% of the stormwater, and if somebody happens to overwater their lawn, we don't want them to do that, that runoff goes right back into the same system and goes back into the ground. But you raise a good point with the brown lawns. If people overwater their lawn, the water that gets down below the root zone ends up back in the groundwater supply. Now that they're not, we're not getting that return flow, but we are seeing the reduction in water demands. And then the last one I'll talk about is just the aging infrastructure, it's a problem all over, and, and so as, as the water utilities, Metropolitan Water District, we all have that challenge as our facilities age. How do we smartly replace those facilities so that they're there for future generations to use? There is one more project that I forgot to mention that will really help the San Gabriel Valley and it is Metropolitan's Regional Recycle Water Project. It's a joint partnership with the County Sanitation District, Metropolitan Water District. It'll be the largest recycling plant of its kind in the country, and upper district is a cornerstone use for that water, and, and when that project is completed in eight to 10 years, it will completely eliminate our region's dependence on imported water from Northern California, and that'll be a huge accomplishment in eight to 10 years. I no longer say if the project is implemented, I have to say when it's implemented, because it's absolutely necessary to get done. So I hope, I hope that answered most of those questions.
Some, yeah, but again, West Covina drinking nothing but underground waters, okay? So the groundwater table, basically, you pumping out, I don't know, three or four stations are business, you have Franscito Avenue and some other places, you pumping the water out, okay, you supply to our resident, and at the same time, supply to maybe some other area. So in that way, okay, my understanding based on the education is, the water is free, but the transfer is very expensive, so Colorado River water come to us would be very, very pricey. That's why we drinking the underground water, because it's very cheap, okay, it's local. So, so if we drink your underground water, okay, now you want us to conserve the water, so does it make any sense, okay, that we are using our, our local underground table?
Okay, so, so we do, actually, the groundwater, the groundwater you're drinking is 20% imported water from Northern California, because we bring it in, we put it back into the groundwater. That's how we sustain the groundwater basin. We prefer the rainwater, because that is the cheapest source of water, but if it doesn't rain locally, we have to bring in more of that imported water from North, currently from Northern California, but if we get this regulatory approval, we'll be able to tap the more ample supply currently on the Colorado River side. And so, yeah, it is more expensive water, but it's water. What conservation does for us this year, because we don't have approval to bring in the Colorado River water, and there's not enough state project water to meet our needs, is if we conserve, we're pumping less water out of the ground, and that stored water under our ground will last us for much, much longer if we pump less.
And last question I have, that would be the quality of the water, safety of the drinking water that we pumping from underground. We have the BKK landfill, okay, and in the middle of our city, so we wanna make sure how you not only conserve the waters, but how about the usage safely for people to use, okay? And, and how we check those water quality, without contamination for our resident to drink?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll speak for your water utilities. That water is tested daily, it has a very rigorous water quality requirements. EPA, California Department of Drinking Water, watches that water, and if there is any contaminants that exceeds any of those standards, either those wells are shut off or treatment is put in place to remove those, those chemicals or contaminants from the water before it's served to you in your taps. So I can assure you that the tap water you receive is, is very safe.
So will be due to, we have no cap on top of BKK, will that be potentially going to our water table that you are pumping currently?
I, I am not familiar with, but I, I believe the BKK landfill does have a liner, it is regulated by the, the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board, and so that is being monitored, is heavily regulated, and I know there's monitoring wells. I'm not that familiar with the site, but any landfill of that nature has monitoring wells surrounding it, as well as lining and containment, and the monitoring wells are there to see if any of that material has breached the containment.
So who is monitoring, is a Cal Recycler, or this is by the DTSC, or the state?
Probably all of them.
Or the water company is monitoring, check the, the potentially issue, because, okay, we don't know when that potential issue will go into the water table.
Yeah, it's, it's monitored at the state level, it's monitored at the local level by the Regional Water Control Board. Okay, thank you, sir.
Not, not right now. Sir, you know, you know the format, no. Any other questions?
I was just gonna say that you have your contact information there that the public hints, go ahead and send you an email, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Just checking.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You could ask him quietly or email him, if you don't mind, or you could ask him when you come up here, too. I'm sure you could connect them. Next presentation is by Southern California Edison. Can we have Marissa Castro come up, please?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, and staff and audience. Marissa Castro Salvati, Government Relations Manager for Southern California Edison. Marissa Castro Salvati, Government Relations Manager for Southern California Edison. Today, we wanted to actually share with you our city-specific circuit reliability presentation to West Covina. We previously actually had a discussion with City Manager Dave Carmaney to actually have this presented so that it would allow you to give you an overview of the system reliability for Southern California Edison. And I think we have it on the screen as well. In addition, my colleague here, who's our planning supervisor at the Covina Service Center, will be chiming in with the presentation as well on the operations portion of the presentation. So if we can go to the first slide, please. So as you can see, this slide gives you basically an overview of who we are, who is Southern California Edison. As you know, Southern California Edison is part of Edison International, we are an affiliate of Edison International, which is our parent company. We are one of the largest, nation's largest electric utilities, and we have over 130 years of history here in California. As most of you know, our headquarters is in the city of Rosemead, and we are regulated by two bodies, FERC on the federal side and CPC on the state side. We have 50,000 square miles of S C E service territory across central coastal, as well as Southern California, and we have 1.5, 15 million residents through 5 million customer accounts, and we serve 15 counties and 185 cities and 13 Native American tribes. The next slide, please. This slide, I call it Electricity 101, for folks who want to understand what, how electricity is generated, transmitted, and distributed. So it basically gives you this diagram, this picturesque photo here that shows you the generation. Big Creek, for some of you who may be familiar, I don't, I'm not sure if we've invited, I know Tony's probably one of the longer tenured here, Big Creek is our facility up in Fresno. We have our trips there to allow you to experience the...
I didn't get invited.
We'll, we'll invite you the next time. So we, we actually will resume the, the trips up to Big Creek that we allow our stakeholders to experience how we generate our, our water through the, through our hydro facility. This is one of the hardest working water, as we call it, here in Southern California. This basically shows you from generation, we have transmission, you see all the, the different towers that you have, the lattice towers that you see as you go through freeways and through some of the communities, and then it delivers it to subtransmission, then distribution, then into the customers' homes and businesses. As I mentioned earlier, this basically will cover 50,000 square miles. We have about 4,600 circuits, 1.7 million poles throughout our service territory, we have 126,000 miles of transmission and distribution lines, and 730,000 transformers. Next slide, please. This one basically gives you an overview of how we strengthen and modernize our grid. Southern California Edison spends more than $5 billion each year to maintain, improve, and harden our infrastructure, and that is included within our infrastructure reliability. We have a wildfire mitigation plan, and also the transmission, the grid readiness, and of course, our long-term energy policy that, that we have put together. We have our 2021 capital investment that shows there on the screen, 91.7 miles of underground cable were replaced, 146.5 miles of overhead conductor replaced for public safety, and this is through our wildfire mitigation plan. We have 34.5 thousand distribution poles replaced, transmission poles were also replaced, as well as 29 underground structure replacement. And on this next slide, please, this shows you some of the things that we have done on our wildfire mitigation activities and how we have implemented our plans. And I'll defer to my colleague Joe to kind of give you a little bit of a background on some of the things that we have actually put together for our, our service territory.
Thank you, Marissa. Mayor Castellanos and fellow council members, I appreciate the opportunity to stand here in front of you guys and, you know, show our efforts here, and, you know, I think we all can understand the environment right now in Southern California with wildfires. So Edison has taken it very, very, under a microscope, if you will, and so I just wanted to share with you guys some of the wildfire mitigation activities that we have been involved with so far. If you look at the very first one, this one, this one to me is very important in a sense of being a planning manager here in Covina, West Covina being one of our cities, distribution equipment inspections. If you look at our target, 163,000 inspections, we had 179,600 in 2021. So we met and exceeded that goal. And I say that primarily for Covina because, or West Covina, the amount of infrastructure we have on the distribution circuits as opposed to transmission circuits. So we're, we're really looking to capitalize in that area. But also to highlight transmission equipment inspections, we had a target of 16,800, exceeded 20,800 inspections completed. Insulated wire covered conductor, 1,000 miles that we wanted to get our circuits re-conducted, we hit 1,500 milestone. Fast-acting fuses, our target of 330 fuses installed or replaced, we hit 350. Our hazard tree management, 120,000 trees were looking to be assessed, we assess 131,400 in 2021. Weather station installation, 375, these are our eyes out in the field, when, you know, behind the scenes, if you will, we have cameras out there, 375 looking to be installed, we installed 400. So we've been able to consistently try to meet and exceed our activities with regard to wildfire mitigation, and a lot of that does occur here within West Covina. I'll go ahead and go to the next slide, please.
I wanted to add, just a couple of things on, on this particular slide. We also have full-time meteorologists that basically monitor a lot of the, the weather system that we have here in Southern California, and that is part of our wildfire mitigation plan. You've also probably noticed a lot of aerial inspections that have taken place throughout the San Gabriel Valley, especially in those high-fire risk areas. And as we go through the, the slides, we will also show to you that there are a number of circuits, I believe four circuits, in the West Covina communities that actually is considered as high-fire risk areas. And the one last important thing that I think I wanted to make sure and just let the city know, that we also have the community resource centers, which hopefully that if we do ever have P S P S, which is the Public Safety Power Shut Off, that we can actually call on West Covina if they ever need any kind of community resource centers to be staged within the city, especially if the fire is within the vicinity of, of the, the city of West Covina. So that's something that we can do as a partnership with the city.
Thank you, Marissa. I was leaving out a few key components.
That's what I'm here.
Public Safety Power Shutoffs, I'm sure many of you guys have heard, but S E implements public safety power shutoffs to temporarily shut off power to some communities when, when there is a high risk to wildfire, or for wildfire, to prevent the electric system from becoming a source of ignition. P S P, P S P S is used as a measure of last resort. It's not something we want to go to immediately, but in the case of, you know, extreme weather conditions, we will, under the right conditions, you know, de-energize our power lines to prevent ignition. Multiple methods are used to notify customers and stakeholders in impacted areas before, during, and after a P S P S event. S E provides resources to support customers during P S P S and offers several programs and rebates to help customers be prepared and more resilient during emergencies. Part of that was what Marissa was alluding to with the 64 sites that we do have across Southern California, that have been identified to get community centers with Edison personnel out there to support residents during a P S P S event. S E is working to reduce the impact of P S P S and is continuing to strengthen the electric grid to become more resilient in the face of extreme weather events.
So I wanted to also add that, as Joe had said, this is the last resort. Unfortunately for Southern California, or for California in general, it used to be that fire season is seasonal, but now it's all year round, and that's why at Southern California Edison, we have actually implemented a very extensive and expansive wildfire mitigation plan for, for our communities. The next slide, please, here we go. This is just an overview to show you that creating a clean energy future, we have a white paper that we actually put together back in the earlier days, where it started out as Pathway 2020, we passed 2020 already, it was Pathway 2030, now it's Pathway 2045. This basically is a white paper that allows you to see the key steps that California has taken in terms of reaching carbon neutrality. And so we do a lot of things that will make this issue lessen our, our reduction of natural gas consumption and using low-carbon fuels. We have a lot of issues related to transportation electrification, where a lot of our communities are now having a lot of charging stations that they have in communities, because everybody now is, is looking at having electric cars or hybrid vehicles, but we also are looking at electrifying buildings and of course, decarbonize the electric sector. And the next slide that's on the screen is just another one that basically is another white paper that is available on, online called Creating a Clean Energy, Mind the Gap. So all these things, actually, if you need to read something and, and leisurely, these are things that's available on our sce.com website. So on to our reliability overview. So what is reliability? So in simplest term, it's basically giving our customers the dependable electricity that they need. In terms of outages, there, back in the days when we used to do this presentation, there were only actually two description of outages, either maintenance outages, which all of us know as planned outages, and repair outages, which is known as unplanned or emergency outages. Under repair outages, you have sustained outage, which basically, an outage lasting greater than five minutes, and momentary outage is less than five minutes. So those are some of the things that you'll hear, or when you look at our website, when you're looking at some outages, those are some of the things that you will see listed during an outage. And then the two other items here, public safety power shut off, P S P S, now that we have it as part of our wildfire, that it's now included as part of our outage, and of course, major event day are typically those that are storms, like we had the windstorm back in January, that is considered a major event day. And I'll defer to, on Joe.
Okay, so how do we measure reliability? So there are a couple of, we'll call them an acronym, if you will, but S A D, S A F E, and M A F E. Let's talk about the first one here, S A D. Basically, it's a, it's a formula, if you will, total minutes every S E customer was without power due to a sustained outage, divided by the total number of customers, and that's going to give us our system average interruption duration in S A D for short. And basically, what that boils down to is, what's the average amount of time my power service will be unexpectedly interrupted, okay? If we move down to S A F E, it's what's the average number of times my power service will be unexpectedly interrupted? And if we move down to M A F E, it's what's the average number of times my power service will be momentarily, which is less than five minutes of interruption? So these are all things that are very critical to, to our drive and our reliability efforts, and we're constantly looking to improve in any manner we can, whether it's infrastructure replacements or things of that nature, to, to bring those numbers down to really limit the impact to the customers in West Covina and Covina and all the surrounding cities. Do you want me to flip the overview real quick?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that on this next page, which is an overview of the circuits that you have here in the city of West Covina, there's actually a correlating map that will, will go down below that you'll see towards the end, but these are all the circuits that serve West Covina, and there are four of them, that's P S P S, which we will talk a little bit about.
Yeah, so there's a total of 38 circuits that serve West Covina, and as you can see, we do have a total number of customers listed, the total number of customers we have are listed on that circuit specific, so it may not be exactly in the jurisdiction that you guys serve. But yeah, 38 circuits with a total of 64,897 customers. But to give you guys some brief description as cause definitions on S A D and S A F E, number one, equipment failure. So we have in-service failure of transformers, switches, conductors, you know, that could be above ground, it could be below ground. We also have vegetation and animals, so you know, rodents getting across the lines, it happens quite often, and you know, they never learn, they come right back to the same spot. So it could be rodents, birds, anything that's going to cause a short circuit between our conductors. It could be other, circuit was patrolled, but no cause was found. Operations, we performed urgent maintenance, but without a three-day notice, like we typically like to provide. Third party, outage caused by Mylar balloons, car hit poles, or a customer digging, and P S P S, a public safety power shut off. So those are your definitions of what, you know, how we are, you know, getting to the S A D and S A F E numbers. I'd like to provide the next slide with some historical reliability of circuits serving West Covina, focusing on 2021. In our S A D category, we were able to definitely reduce the amount of impact there for your constituents. You could see the, the red bar is the S C E grid, and the blue being West Covina's reliability. So if you look at the transition from 2020 to 2021, we were able to narrow that gap. Also moving over to S A F E, same thing, we're at a one-to-one there, and looking over to M A F E, numbers there, S E grid and West Covina, little bit of some growth there, but just, you know, some momentary interruptions, and again, those are the less than five minutes interruptions that we're discussing. Next slide, please. So if we look at the S A D, okay, 2021 S A D outages, which were the causes for these outages, equipment failure, 48.2%. Operations, 21.2%, that's again, when operations had to take an outage that was less than 72 hours' notice. Third party, you know, Mylar balloons, car hit poles, 13.6%. Weather, fire, earthquake, 11.8, and other, 5.2. Nothing on the vegetation and P S P S. Next slide, please. And on the S A F E numbers, equipment failure, again, 41.3%, operations, 27.4%, third party, 15.1%, weather, fire, earthquake, 10%, and other at 6.3%. Again, vegetation animal, very, very small, not really non-reportable amount there, but the next slide will actually show what Marissa was alluding to. Again, this is kind of a circuit map, if you will, that we look at here at Edison, but really what we want to highlight is if you look, it's kind of hard to see on the screen, but the P S P S circuits. We have the and, the bobby, the metal, and the tummy. Those are the four circuits that we've identified as, as far as high fire in, in the area, and this is kind of gearing back towards what we discussed, our wildfire mitigation activities and efforts that we're trying to accomplish.
I wanted to also mention that San Gabriel Valley actually has been fortunate enough to avoid P S P S activation. We probably have had maybe one or two in the area, unlike areas like in Antelope Valley, Santa Clarita, where the winds are really blowing hard, they have experienced a number, a tremendous amount of P S P S in that area, but I would have to say San Gabriel Valley has avoided the, the P S P S to be activated here in the communities. On this last page, actually, and this, this is the part I think, Dave, we were trying to figure out, we have to click on it, on the little box on the left-hand corner, that basically shows some of the work that we are doing within West Covina. The map itself basically will show you the work, the regional work that we're doing, whether it's distribution or transmission. So those are some of the activities, and I know we had a little difficult time, I think, trying to figure out how to show it up on the screen, but for the purpose of this information, this actual presentation is actually on the Edison website, www.sce.com/ outage. And on the left-hand side, you have the reliability reports, and it has everybody's reliability reports in terms of counties and, and cities, so it is available then. And that is our presentation. The rest of the slides, I think what you have listed are the backup slides that we have. Those slides shows, show you the circuit specifics, so each circuit shows you the, the causes, the outages that happen on that specific, you know, specific circuit. So that one, we don't have to go through, and I think you can leisurely go through it, and I know Councilwoman Lopez Viedo had some issues with her circuit, and that's, that will also show what circuit, and I'm not sure if you were able to... And I'm not sure if you were able to see what circuit it was that she was on. You live off of?
California, yeah, Merced.
So that's, you know, that's something that we can, you know, look into.
Yeah, absolutely. We can definitely dig into that. And one quick thing about that, you know, the map that we're having difficulties looking up, the good thing about it is it's user-friendly in a sense. If you put in a search of West Covina, you will actually see the district border of what we consider West Covina. And everything highlighted within that border shows you the amount of activity going on right now, you know, specifically, well, specifically 2021 there, but you can also see some 2022 activity as well. So I think you can kind of see, you know, the benefits of, I think, Edison's hard work and determination to, you know, harden our grid, get our system more reliable, to lower our numbers for the customers' impact. And then if I could, you know, help you out with that circuit, I mean, just, I think maybe some information from you, and I can definitely look into it a little deeper.
Can I ask you questions?
Sure, go ahead.
I just know that a few months ago, I knew there was a power outage, and then they were, because I know a lot of residents were complaining nearby that they had low voltage for four days. And for four days, you couldn't turn on your AC, you couldn't have any hot water because if you had the electric water heater. And so those two big component made a big difference, that you couldn't function, the basic. But they did provide some power, and you couldn't even watch television, it'll just turn off, it just zaps things. Everything was very low, so don't know what happened there. But I would love to get that information, because like I said, almost yearly, there's like a blackout or something happened. But on one of the questions with your PowerPoint presentation, you said last year, pretty much almost 50% was equipment failure. I know you said 41, 48%. And how are we with those equipment?
How are we what?
Are they repaired? Or are they, you know, like, I mean, that's equipment failure?
Absolutely. So, you know, what we're speaking to there is what drove the SADI and the SAFI, right? What caused the outage? We have a great team, first responders, we call them, their job is to get out there, assess the situation, make sure the hazard has been cleared, and if it requires a crew, we get out there and we make those repairs. So these were what caused, but these have been repaired. So, you know, if it was a transformer that blew, we put up a new transformer, and we load it accordingly. You know, a lot of this infrastructure, you know, I can't tell you when it was put in, but chances are, some of these poles were put in in 50, 60, 70s. And so the shelf life sometimes, and to highlight our inspection process, you know, we were really able to exceed the expectation on our distribution facilities, and we're looking for situations like this to upgrade our facilities, right? So out of the equipment failure, out of these 48%, we'll talk about SADI, we've replaced the 48%. But also, when we go out there, we're looking to capture any additional facilities that we can improve. So we go out there, we're not just looking at the pole to, you know, we're going to look around and see if there's any opportunities while we have an outage. Let's capture that as well. You know, do we have any pending notifications that we can replace transformer, pole, conductors, anything like that? So it is definitely on our radar to get as many inspections as we can to get that information back to us to make the necessary repairs if we don't see these numbers grow or even stay here.
Okay, thank you. What was the site, website again? So if residents wanted to look at the?
www.sce.com/ outage. And on the left-hand side of the drop-down menu, you'll see reliability reports.
And then that, you can just type in your address?
You can just look down, you just scroll, you'll see LA County, so under Los Angeles County, you'll have all the cities and communities in that one page.
And you can also go to capital improvement. That might be another site that customers might be wanting to look at, see what's going on in their area.
Yeah, what improvements are scheduled.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know that we had also included some, the different rate plans, and I can, you know, I can actually talk a little bit about it, because I know I only have 10 minutes. So that's why I said I'm trying to go as quickly, but I'll run through them. I'll run.
It's already 45 minutes.
Well, this one, that one is important, just because I know a lot of residents received all those letters in the mail. It says, do you want to change? Do you want to keep? And then the different rates, and so are the residents expecting pay a lot more?
Well, every year, just so that folks understand, every three years, we request for a general rate case to CPUC. And we request them, and, you know, changes in the rates do come every three years. I wanted to actually just kind of run through just quickly that what you're talking about is a time of use, whether they can opt out or opt in. And they had an opportunity to actually sign up to whether opt out. There were some issues. I think when we were at the West Covina event that we had, that Councilman Wu sponsored, there were a couple of residents there that had said, we tried calling. So we were able to assist through our consumer affairs to help them walk through some of the problems that they had, because they wanted to opt out, they didn't want the time of use. And so we, you know, we were able to help them through our consumer affairs. But there are also other plans that I wanted to actually just share, that in April, customers should have seen a $59 credit, and then in October, you'll see another $59 credit, $59 credit on your bill. But there are a lot of different plans that I think customers may not be familiar with. And that is, you know, I know CARE is probably the most common income-qualified program that we have, and FARA. Those are some of our programs, our medical baseline allowance for folks who do need more allowance if they do have a family member that needs it with a doctor's certification. You have your payment arrangements that a lot of our customers may need, whether it's residential or small business. And then there's also an energy bill debt forgiveness of up to $8,000, and those are the eligible past due balances that are also for income-qualified customers. So when you call the 800 number and ask for these plans, they're able to also explain it to you as well.
So was it better for residents to opt out?
It really depends on how you use your electricity. Some people just enjoy having, you know, the total use of their, you know, electricity. Some needs to, I guess, put time of use so they're forced.
Basically, it depends like if they're, what time they're running the AC, what time they're home, how many TVs they have on. So those are all the variables.
So it really depends on how you use your electricity. So.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here and giving us all that information.
Thank you very much, thank you.
That takes us to oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out a yellow speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. Assistant City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
Good evening, Mayor. We have nine speaker cards.
Thank you.
Our first speaker is Jim Grivitch, followed by Herman, followed by Mike Greenspan.
I haven't been here for a while. Thank you. I'm here to speak about a subject that pains me. It's called the Athens Contract. It actually was the cause of my first presentation to this council seven years ago. The city has received two audits by state agencies. Both of them were extremely critical of the city about, because of the Athens Contract, essentially fiscally irresponsible contracting. It's not bid. You don't get the best price. You don't try to maintain a level of service that's competitive, and then basically the citizens have to pay a huge bill. I'm specifically tonight asking you to reject option one that's being presented to you tonight for action. It takes a bad contract and makes it worse. There are this option one. I'm asking that if you consider the contract at all, you only consider option two. Option one, in my mind, has two different forms of tax increases that have not been submitted to the voters for approval as is required. The first one is there's, this is only an option one, there is a $1.2 million payment, special payment to the general fund on top of the excise tax. That transfer requires the vote of the people, because it's a tax increase, all the money that's raised to do that. And what's weird about that, it's in the context of another tax increase. If you, you have to read the fine print to find it. In very small print, it says that the rate increases in the future would be COLA plus 1%. That's a tax increase. It's not submitted to voters. And it's wrapped in a dishonesty. In several places in the document, it implies that somehow or other, you're going to get street sweeping and graffiti abatement for free. That's a lie. Builders, the residents are going to pay and pay and pay and pay if that happens. That 1%, oh, that doesn't sound like very much. Just take 1% and add it on every year for 30 years. That means the rates are going to go up 36% to pay for this no cost of graffiti abatement and street sweeping. That's a huge amount of money. The voters are not going to have an opportunity to vote on it. That's just wrong. I should mention that it also violates the purchasing policy that you're supposed to adopt tonight. It's a contract for new services that exceed five years. Your policy clearly says that new services should not exceed five years in any contract, and this one's forever, really, if you read it carefully. It's not, there's no limit. It violates your purchasing policy because it was never bid out. You don't know what a good price is for graffiti abatement or street sweeping, because you never bid it. Of course, you don't know what a good price is for trash, because you never bid that Basically, the bottom line is the whole thing is a ripoff of the residents of the city. And so please don't vote for option one. That's the bottom line. Thank you.
Herman, followed by Mike Greenspan, followed by Jerry Potress.
So I got these documents, one for Ms. Viedo, Mr. Wu, the criminal, Brian, and Diaz for And let me start off in this format to discuss racist slurs and profanity that have become routine for a handful of regular attendees in public meetings. Untrue. 42 USC, 1983. Color of law, 18 USC. Section 242 and Section 245, for the record, absolute protected expression. And what's sad is, I'm going to put into this record tonight, CR 220, CR 00326, JFW, criminal enterprise, and 1%. Just 1%, as you heard the fellow speakers say. Hidden monies, hidden language, all an opportunity for 1%, Mr. Wu. 1%, Mr. Wu. But let's not blame anyone in particular, because as I and my associates that come here and those of the residents of so-called West Covina figured out, we got multiple criminal enterprise, greasy palms, padding wallets, because taxpayers are too fucking stupid. Excuse the language, it's the truth. Brandon Burke versus Ohio US 395, 44, 1969, dirty niggers. No offense, but dirty niggers. However, I'm going to read into the record, this issue regarding taxpayers are being subsidized for housing. A surge of cost, subsidized housing development. HHH affordable housing is a failure, Mr. David. And the projects always made up of consulting fees and administrative waste, abuse, and cost. Again, California Department of Housing has failed, your community development has failed, and you're all fucking doomed. No fucking housing for your children or your grandchildren. You're fucking doomed. So excuse my fucked expression, but expensive projects, fuck bureaucratic project failure, and fuck California, fuck problems. That's the problem, everybody. We're fucked. Layers of city requirements for affordable housing is fucked. You are being fucked with no grease, because like they said from NWA, niggers with attitude. I'm using, oh my God, an acronym. Oh my God. And I pronounced it correctly, right? But the issue here, and let me read in part, I know you are an intelligent man, and though I agree with the many things you say, minus the vulgar language, I just wanted to thank you for showing some respect. Fuck respect. This is our house. We, the people of West Covina, we are the United States of America, we are the Constitution of California, and all of you don't bother to fucking take interest in your government that continues to rip us off, put homeless people in our communities, and fuck up our neighborhoods. 1%. Just 1%. And none of you understand it. The fine gentleman before me gave the illustration of criminal enterprise racketeering and stealing from all of you. And fuck Edison. Get your ass out there and put new volts, upgrade everything so we don't have these outages, Ms. Letty Lopez. Mommy, mommy! Don't you get it? Your grandstanding don't mean shit. 42 USC, 1983, very politely, and thank you for listening. Fuck you. Number one. So I'm submitting this into the record, ma'am.
Mike Greenspan, followed by Jerry Potress, followed by Elsie Messman.
First of all, I want to thank the minister for mentioning Jesus. But remember, if he tries to get Christmas dinner at Tebow's Tim McQuana Country Club, Tim Tebow would bodily throw him from the dining room, because Jesus is Jewish. And I've umpired Christian leagues before, and you know what happens when they cheat in the Christian leagues? They jerk their dicks and blame the umpire, of course. Of course, that's the commissioner's team that cheated with city league players, just for the record. Now, Letty needs to get together with her neighbors if they've got low wattage or whatever, maybe get a volume discount on these things called generators. I heard you need to place them about 20 feet away from the house, but that might, remember, it's not a long-term, but a short-term solution. Having grown up in Florida with hurricanes, a lot of people would get generators, because we never knew when our electricity would come back on. Now, about the water shortage in Atlanta, they had a three-year water shortage all around 2006 to 2009, and a vice president named Joe Biden flew in a helicopter over Douglas and Paulding County. And to see the damage, because he couldn't travel on the roads, they were using Swift Boat Rescue in Paulding County, except they had no river there. It was just flooded. But what they did, restaurants were serving meals on paper plates, so maybe that's not a bad alternative out here, you know, some nice thick You know, some nice thick paper plates saves water from washing dishes. Now, we have every Tuesday and Friday up until July 1st, from 10:00 to 2:00 a.m., 10:00 to 2:00 p.m., 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., you'll get an update on your election results. So today, there was some update, and there'll be more. July 1st will be the last day if necessary, but in case you want to follow your judicial races, your Senate races, your Assembly races. Now, something was mentioned by Rosario's husband, I guess Bill Elliott, about a police review commission. A well-intentioned idea, but folks, it's not a good one. But it's well-intentioned. Maybe FBI might be a better alternative. See, I've been to police review commissions when they first came out in '73 in the lip service Socialist Republic of Berkeley. It was a very serious, oriented police commission. And I've been to the police commission over here in L.A. Somebody called it a dog and pony show. I saw it on TV. And Johnny Mack, the, from the NAACP, got real upset that they called the police commission a dog and pony show. And when you go to the police commission, when they used to open it up, the minute, the second they call a recess, suddenly the room erupts in animal noises because you're technically not disturbing a public meeting. Boy, it's an animal farm at the L.A. Police Commission, and it is a dog and pony show. There was a guy who chaired the commission under James Hahn named Rick Caruso, and 40% of the meetings, he didn't go to. But the other time, I guess he whitewashed everything, all the complaints against the police. And the best thing that Villarogosa did as mayor was remove Rick Caruso from the police commission and replace him with someone who went to the meetings. Now Caruso's touting his accomplishments, which basically were not there. He takes credit for things he does not do. And he's talking about getting rid of corruption, except every opportunity he had a chance. That crooked part-time pig, Mitchell Englander, received money from Caruso for his 2011 campaign for council and his office holder account, his 2015 campaign for council and his office holder account, and his fifth-place finish for Board of Supervisors with Catherine Barger won, he gave 1,500. And a couple of other contributors to Englander. One, Ron Galpern, got his butt kicked, that faggot from City Controller from L.A., ran for statewide. Well, take your 11% with you to the runoff. And then another KKK, and he's gay, planner Kevin James from the Board of Public Works, gave 500 to Englander, and I think he got about 9% or 10% running for city attorney. So it's nice to watch Englanders buddies going down as he's gone down, and it'll be fun to watch Caruso get his butt kicked with his racist white Republican pig friends.
Jerry Potress, followed by Elsie Messman, followed by Terry Cozad.
Good evening. Jerry Potress, West Covina resident. I'm going to speak on Agenda Item 18 tonight. This agenda item has several parts: regulatory compliance, the city's business practices, how much Athens is going to give the city each year, and the SCAG regional food program that appears to be an add-on option. Let's cut to the chase. Residents and business fund this agenda item. Funding comes straight out of our pocketbooks. The glossed-over issue in these documents, these are the documents I'm referring to, is how much of an annual rate increase and for what services is the council going to approve for residents and business to pay over the next 30 years or so? Let's remember that franchise fees are a tax. That's not my opinion. That's been established by the courts repeatedly. Option two is the better option for residents and business. It meets SB 1383 regulatory compliance. Athens pays 10% of its gross receipts as a franchise fee to the city, and Athens kicks back to the city $300,000 to be used at the city's discretion. Option one is the better option for no party except Athens. Option one adds services to the Athens contract that has nothing to do with refuse collection or SB 1383 compliance. Those unrelated services are graffiti removal services, bus stop maintenance, street sweeping, storm drain cleaning, landscaping, and/or municipal services as agreed upon. For those services, Athen kick Athens, kicks back to the city $1.2 million annually. That's $1.2 million. Does not come out of Athens' profits. It comes directly out of the residents' pocketbooks, the residents that you represent. The Athens contract amendment raises another of other concerns as well. Due to time limitations, I will mention just one. The Athens contract has that 30-year evergreen clause that has been the source of outrage for residents and has been red-flagged by two state audits. Adding services to the Athens evergreen contract and adding those services without competitive bidding is inappropriate and violates good public sector business practices and West Covina's procurement policies. One final point. This is key with respect to option one. It is not going to end well if you select that option. I want to be very clear. To repeat, it is not going to end well if you select option one. Thank you.
Elsie Messman, followed by Terry Cozad, followed by Sergio Palos.
Well, I guess we're not going to stop there. Good evening, everybody. My name is Elsie Messman, a resident of West Covina. I'm here regarding Article 14. Let's get a few things straight. The Spring Festival was a loser to the residents of West Covina. Now they're trying to transfer $55,923 and $66,784 to another account, not the Spring Festival, so the festival will look good. If this wasn't for the Spring Festival, these amounts would not be there. Call it like it is and just quit trying to make it look profitable when it's not. I don't know about the $66,784. That was for tables, chairs, flooring, canopies, and generators, to name a few items, and it hasn't showed up on the warrants list that Roxanne Lurmer ordered. But I do have a question on the $59,923 amount. First, I questioned the amount as it was paid on March 3rd and then again on April 22nd, 27th. I put in a public request document, and here's what I got. On March 3rd, payment was voided because the pay name was incorrect, and so it was reissued on April 27th for the same amount and the same name. This amount was for the Spring Festival and was to be brought to the council for ratification on March 15th as there was no purchase order. This was for sanitation, including sinks, restrooms, wastewater disposal, grease, oil disposal, and power for the festival, Spring Festival. What reason would the council approve it if it wasn't for the festival? I heard the city collected $40,000, and even if they collected $50,000, it still would be short. I have proof of some of the amounts that were paid, and here are some of them. $55,923 to United Services. $11,800 for entertainment. $3,000 for petty cash. $9,500 for festival sound. $3,406 to the L.A. County Health Department. $4,543 for barricades for the Sportsplex. $6,678 to the Hollywood Elite Security. $13,600 for deep cleaning the Sportsplex, to a total of $108,450. This does not include staff or other expenses. It's been 90 days, and we, the taxpayers, still don't have all the information. Today, I would like to know who to call to get the actual figures. This was a good idea, but has the city worked within a budget for this festival? If approximately 10,000 people attended to the city, that's, and the city has approximately 110,000 people, that means 100,000 people had their taxpayers' money wasted. The universal law for prosperity says you must produce more than you consume. For information, the staff and council haven't figured that out yet. Thank you.
Terry Cozad, followed by Sergio Palos, followed by...
Good evening. I was going to speak on the Athens, but I don't think I can add any more to what previous speakers have said, so you know what you should do. But I would like to say, especially you, Mr. Wu, you ask lots and lots of questions, and you get answers. I think that when you vote for an item, all of you, you should say why you are voting for what you're voting for. We need to know that you understand the issues and why you're voting the way you do, and we don't get that respect as residents. We just get yes, no, I vote for that, I vote for this. Why? So tonight, when you do vote on things, please let us know why you're voting, and from now on, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Sergio Palos, followed by Ani, followed by Bill Elliott.
Hello, how's it going? My name is Sergio Palos with National Championship Sports. First off, I want to commend you for keeping your composure to certain individuals here. Also, I want to thank you guys for allowing my company, National Championship Sports, to host a tournament this weekend at the Sportsplex. There's been numerous changes there, and it's honestly a big transformation from before and now. And like I said, I just want to say thank you guys for allowing us to do something this past weekend because honestly, we had, it was a last-minute thing. Within two weeks, we were able to round up 24 teams, from teams as far as Newport Beach, Huntington Beach, Whittier, High Desert, that's just to name a few. So we had youth sports there, we had ages 10 to 12 at the Sportsplex. It was very clean. The staff there, they kicked butt. I mean, from Steve to Raul to Roxanne, their staff did an amazing job. Just wanted to give you guys a heads up what they did. So as far as the fields, they really did a great job. It's noticed by the spectators, the coaches. I mean, I even noticed it. When kids get on the field and they compliment the field, I mean, it says volumes. But most of all, the staff, like I said, I'm here because of the staff. I haven't been to a complex in, I've been in this 20 years, and honestly, they kick butt. They kick butt. I know they go a lot unnoticed, but I'm letting you guys know that these guys really, I mean, they were there from 5:00 in the morning till like 10:00 at night, and I was there with them, helping out whatever I can, just because I see what they were going through, and they're excited for the Sportsplex, and I am as well. So I just wanted to share some stuff with you guys. I know I've got five minutes, but let me start handing these out to you guys.
Everything has to go through with the city clerk.
Can you invite us next time when you have an opening? We didn't get invited. We love to be there.
You know what? You guys are free to go whenever we're invited back. I mean, like I said, those are just pictures of what happened this weekend, what it looked like now, and what it looked like before under the Big League Dreams era. So like I said, the staff, really, they kick butt. That's just a token of our appreciation. Yeah, I mean, like I said, we definitely want to be back. We feel like this complex is huge for the city. We could bring revenue, we could bring World Series. You know, we have, actually, I have three World Series for youth all over California. I take care of all the southwestern states in the U.S. I rent at Pickle Park, July 5th through the 9th. So I have one day there, and I have stuff happening at Sunday, but like I said, and we have about 150 teams from all over the country. So if I could bring that here next year, I think we could bring a ton of money into the city, from hotels to restaurants, you name it. So I think within time, once the whole six fields are ready to go, we could definitely push big numbers for the city. So I can't do that unless I get your backing and the staff. And like I said, I mean, we're really pushing for this. We offer youth baseball, youth fast pitch, adult sports. And yeah, like I said, we definitely are excited. The only thing that we do need that can be, so that we can be very successful, is get that restaurant going.
Yes, okay, Sergio. Okay, I think, okay, we've been, have a discussion with our staff all the time regarding how we can utilize and can open up the betting cage. I think the betting cage is open right now, they fixed everything.
They're getting it ready, from what I know, and I think they're waiting on balls because the balls are used up.
Right. And we want to, people to utilize not only the weekend, we want to use the weekday.
Oh, totally. I mean, we could do leagues during the weekday.
So if we can do a seven-day, okay, and then, then we can, okay, when we have a crowd, then we can outsourcing the restaurant. We have two restaurants, but now we're waiting for, okay, fully booked, okay, and regularly we have people over there, okay? And then the restaurant can be outsourcing, and then they can bring revenue and bring service to the people attending the ballgame. So this is the idea, and I want to thank our city staff. I think they work very, very hard. I saw them work all the time, okay, to clean up, and we have hired a professional to fix all the old plague.
We'll connect with you later, but thank you so much. Yeah, we could get your info. Thank you for all this, and we got to move on because of time.
You're good, you're good. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Pictures look amazing. And the fields look great.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, Council members, city staff, and the wonderful residents of the city of West Covina. My name is Ani Samuelian. I'm the president of Nationwide Environmental Services. We're a family-owned business and proud to say we are a woman-owned business. We've been proudly providing street sweeping services to the city of West Covina for many years. We have a wonderful relationship with staff, they're amazing, your Public Works Department, and we look forward to continuing that relationship. I'm here this evening to observe the presentation and the discussions regarding Item Number 18, Amendment to the Trash Contract, only to the extent that it impacts our street sweeping contract with the city. Previous proposed amendments impacted our existing sweeping contract, and we just want to confirm that there is no intention by the city to impact our agreement. Yesterday, late yesterday, our attorney sent an email to the city attorney and to the city clerk requesting clarification concerning the proposed amendment to the Trash Contract, Option 1. As you may recall, back in February 2022, the previous proposed amendment for the Trash Contract directly adversely affected the existing enforced contract between our company and the city of West Covina. Therefore, tonight, I just want clarification that what is being requested is not going to impact our street sweeping contract. I believe Option Number 1, it appears to provide, among other things, additional services or source of revenue to the city up to $1.2 million, which can be used for services, including street sweeping. Again, I just want to confirm that the city and the contractor both have the same understanding that the proposed amendment will not impact our street sweeping contract, but simply provide an additional source of revenue. We want to continue servicing the beautiful city of West Covina. We're proud to be here. I care about the community. We're family-owned, and if there's anything we can ever do, we're here for the community. And basically, I'm just here for clarification to see, to make sure our contract is still in place. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. I want to talk about a few things tonight. First thing on my list is that audio visual screen right there, or the screen. You know, I, I dealt with the previous administration over this screen one time, and they required media that's going to be displayed on the screen to be reviewed by the city manager's office. And I actually dealt with the assistant city manager back then. She's so forgettable, I can't remember her name, but she's the dog catcher in Pomona now. She basically shut me down. So recently, I contacted the assistant city manager now, one of them, and I asked her if, you know, I could get this media reviewed that I wanted to submit. And she got with the city clerk and she called me back and she told me, no, basically, can't use it. Well, why not? Well, because the city clerk said historically, residents aren't allowed to use that screen. Edison's allowed to use it, the gas company's allowed to use it, the water district is allowed to use it. But it belongs to the people of West Covina. It doesn't belong to the councilwoman from the second district. It doesn't belong to the councilwoman from the third district, or the mayor, or the councilman from the fifth district, or this communist over here. It doesn't belong to the city manager, it doesn't belong to the assistant city manager, and it certainly doesn't belong to the city clerk. That screen was paid for by taxpayers. It belongs to me. And it belongs to everyone in this room and everyone listening to me tonight. I don't know why we put up with this disruption. You know, his freedom of speech up here, using the F-word and everything, let him do it. All this clapping, I can't even hear the city clerk speak.
Mr. Herman, if you would, you know, not clap anymore.
He should be kicked out of here for that. He's disruptive. So, so I'm, I'm upset about that screen and I'd like to see some action from the city council because on what authority do the people of West Covina have to be denied? Whose authority? Who? Historically, what, the free lunch administration? Give me a break. All right, so I'm going to move on. There is an albatross around the city's neck, and it has been for several years, speaking of the free lunch administration, who decided to purchase this, this house on Lark Ellen that is a magnet for homeless and criminal activity. How'd you like to live next to that place? I wouldn't. For some reason, the city decided to rent the place back to the people that they overpaid by hundreds of thousands of dollars for that property. And years later, it's an eyesore. It's a criminal magnet. It looks filthy. The city owns it. There's trash everywhere on that property. Homeless frequently, I drive past, I see West Covina Police Service Resources just being wasted. That house should have been torn down a couple of years ago, and nothing is being done. I'm sick of looking at that house. The city council needs to take action on that. Two Almani police officers were killed in the line of duty this last week. And this lowlife district attorney that we have went on to be interviewed by a really hostile press corps today. And he was asked a lot of really tough questions, not enough, because he wussed out and walked out in the middle of the, of many more questions to be, to be asked. And he made a bunch of excuses, saying we can't predict the future and everything. But the truth is, if George Gascon had followed California law, that lowlife that killed those two Almani cops that could have been West Covina police, that could have happened here, guys, he would have been in a jail cell. Instead, he was on probation, and he murdered those cops. And this communist here supports Gascon. He supports not prosecuting criminals, not holding them accountable. He advocates for going easy on violent criminals. And he even said, it doesn't matter if somebody commits a major crime like the murder of two police officers, they should never be locked up for life. They should never get the death penalty. They should be released one day. That's dis-
Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
Sarah Love, followed by R. Robinson, followed by John Shoemaker.
Hi, guys. I know it's been a while. I've been wanting to come here about an incident that happened in April. I'm not here about an item, but it was Sunday, April 10th, and we had a, some kind of fight going on with two cars at fire station number three, and I got caught in the middle of it with my dog. And I, I finally made it back to the house, but one of the cars started stalking me. And I had a tenant, and she said, oh, we need to call 911. I said, don't call 911, because I know West Covina doesn't have enough police officers for something like this. They're not going to come. Okay? So she, we called, she called at 10:55 PM. In the meantime, my husband, who, and me, we both got in our cars and kind of chased the person off. I know we're probably not supposed to do that, but we have to, we feel like we have to. And I know that's not all West Covina. I know it's the state of California and LA County too, but we know there's not enough police. So finally, so we, she called at 10:55. The next morning at 12:47, they called me back, asking if I still needed the police. So that's a concern I have in West Covina. I know a lot of the money goes to pensions and stuff, but we need more officers on the streets, if possible. And, and also, addressing George Gascon or Gascon, you know, I would expect four of you guys to be a little more outspoken. I mean, everybody bags on Brian, but at least he tells you exactly where he stands. We were kind of hoping that you four would be a little more outspoken, maybe I just haven't heard it, but I, I would, I mean, I would hope all of you guys have signed the petition to recall him, and I would like to hear a little bit more. Either way, where do you guys stand on this? Because right now, I'm not quite sure. I thought I was maybe last year, but I'm not sure now. I disagree with Brian, but at least he has the guts to say what he, he believes. So yeah, I would, I'd like to hear from, from you guys. And I know there could be retribution from, from LA County, but I still would like to hear that. So, thank you.
R. Robinson, followed by John Shoemaker.
Good evening, Council. Do you think your children need experimental messenger RNA gene therapy, gene manipulation? We ought to push back. We ought to be absolutely opposed to the idea of allowing pharma companies to alter messenger RNA sequences in injectable products without full placebo-controlled clinical studies to determine the new formulated injections are safe and effective. There's a paragraph in this book, there's no possible justification for vaccinating the young. The COVID-19 health risk for all healthy young people under the age of 18 is zero. There is no evidence that they present a SARS-CoV-2 infection risk to anyone, and the scientific evidence, which does not exist, clearly indicates that they do not infect others. Therefore, any suggestion that COVID-19 vaccines could harm children only adds to the obvious conclusion that there is no public health rationale to vaccinate children and young people. Well, last week, the Disinformation Committee of the FDA, they call it the Vaccine Advisory Panel, voted unanimously to recommend Moderna's COVID-19 vaccine for children ages 6 to 17, and then the following day, six months, babies, babies. Now they're, now they're going to get their genes manipulated. Do you, do your kids need their genes manipulated? Think about that, your grandkids? The Vaccine Committee voted unanimously, and the next day, oh, okay, so, so the vaccine cult, the COVID now is a religion for people, and the government is God. And God provides information, and anybody with a contrary opinion, oh, that's misinformation. That's misinformation. God, the government, provides information. I mean, this is so weird. I can't even believe it's happening. But now we're going after the babies. Gene manipulation. Well, anyway, Dr. Robert Malone is the inventor of this messenger RNA technology. And he has a petition with 16,000 physicians and scientists agree that kids shouldn't get the COVID vaccine. "The COVID vaccines are irreversible and potentially damaging," says Dr. Robert Malone, who explains why 16,000 physicians and medical scientists around the world signed a declaration, publicly declaring, healthy children should not be vaxxed. Before you vaccinate your child, you have to realize what's going to happen to them is irreversible. There's myocarditis, scar tissue, it's nanotechnology, which can potentially go everywhere, through every membrane in the human body, sterilization. The time won't let me permit the list of things that can happen to you, because it screws up your immune system. Anyway, moving on, this, does this committee understand the legal implications of policy applied to a pediatric population? What's going on with the industry is conspiracy, racketeering, wrongful death, antitrust violations, conflicts of interest, patent law, all this technology. This is high, this is a high-tech, a high-tech genocide program. And as a layperson, I, I think that the State Attorney General's Office, backed by grand jury reports, may decide to weigh in on this federal matter. And it can't, it can't happen soon enough.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
In a recent council meeting, the speaker stated school districts must pay attention to student safety, not to use SROs, but real police officers. This reflects, at least when it comes to West Covina Unified, the complete ignorance of that speaker, who pretends to have knowledge of the city. West Covina Unified, the SROs are West Covina police officers. Actually, one of the first SROs I ever met is now our police chief, Richard Bell. I didn't know you weren't a real cop. There was an attack on one member of the council because he has stated publicly that he supports the LA County DA. Yet this very same individual has not said anything about other council members' silence on the issue of removing the person from office. All these other council members have done is hold a meaningless vote, a vote in no confidence, means nothing. Also, to try to blame Brian Tabatai, may I get that right for once? Close, okay. I'll get it yet, for the murders committed by others, is this as incorrect as blaming Hop Along Acity, who gets up here and states immigrants are cockroaches, and we need more white people in West Covina, along with his support for everyone having a gun, no restrictions for the murders committed by white supremacists like in Buffalo? One other thing, recently, Tony Wu published pictures of him with students in a classroom at a local school. Pretty sure Tony did receive permission, because they wouldn't have let him do it. More than likely, though, I wonder if he told the people involved they were going to be used for political propaganda. This is not the worst of it. Tony Wu requested the children call him grandpa. Grandpa. I know of many families, including my own, where these titles belong to only those who are family members, not egomaniacal politicians. But let's give Tony the benefit of the doubt. He felt grandfatherly towards these children, and it was not just another narcissistic action by Tony Wu. Well, if he felt like these children's grandfather, he would want to do almost anything that any grandfather would do to protect these students, not use them as polit, cheap political props. He truly wanted to protect them. He would not be wasting money on a health department, would spend that money to put more police officers on the streets, to not just protect them in school, but on the way home and while they're in their homes. He would not be spending money on a Sportsplex, but would spend the money to protect those children while giving clean and safe parks for them to play. He would open up the facility so they can use the city park. If he really felt like a grandfather, he'd spend money on after-school programs in our parks, not for dead plants that we won't be able to water in center dividers around the city. Also, when it comes to family titles, I have never called anyone who is not a family member by birth or marriage, grandpa, grandma, aunt, uncle, sister, father, or mother. In all fairness, I do have to call, I do call a priest father, and nun sister or mother as appropriate. To have more accuracy, there is another group of people I call mother. That is followed by a word that starts with F and has six characters. And sir, you're definitely one of those and deserve that title. You earned it.
No more speakers?
No more speakers, Mayor. I don't have a speaker card.
I will not call you Alababa or anything like that, so don't worry about it, or communist or any of those crazy names. But I do want to thank the West Covina Police Department.
AD, would you give your name?
Jefferson Daru. In fact, the morning after you and I were going to meet, Mr. Carmen, over at the park, about 5 o'clock that morning, West Covina police are sitting out in front of my house. The tailgate to my truck is hanging on the floor, so I'm thinking, oh, what the hell's going on? So I walk out there, and they, they tell me, well, someone was in the process of stealing the darn thing, and they chased after him, and they caught him somewhere down Amar. So I wanted to come up here and thank the police department for their diligence, their due diligence. And I'm, to be honest, I was kind of like, when I was looking out my window, I'm thinking, why is the police stealing my tailgate? You know, what the hell's going on here? And I wasn't even too sure what they were telling me was accurate, but just recently, just a couple of days ago, I received a letter from the district attorney's office to, I guess, show up to the hearing. So I know what they said was accurate, and I just wanted to say thank you, because I have been told in the past that I don't come up here often enough and compliment the city for its good work. And good work, there's plenty of being done in the city, but don't get mad at us residents that come up, come up and tell you where things aren't going so great. That's something you should appreciate as well. Thank you.
Thank you. No more speakers?
No more speaker cards, Mayor.
City manager, would you please respond to public comment concerns?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council, members of the public. Thank you for a chance to briefly respond to some of the comments that were made. I'd like to begin by thanking all of our speakers for attending tonight and for exercising their right of free speech and to share their opinions and seeking redress of their grievances. We welcome that, and we're glad they're here. Four of our speakers tonight spoke about the Athens contract, which is on your agenda tonight, for some direction, and we may need some more time on this. And we may need some more time on this issue. I think it's important that we get into focus what the issues are and get a community response to how we're going to manage these requirements that the state has given us for recycling our household hazardous waste, or excuse me, not hazardous waste, but food waste, that it might prevent methane being emitted in landfills. So it's an honorous new state law. It's going to cost a lot of money to implement, but that's, that's why it's on your agenda Mr. Grivich asked that we not go with one of the options and rather go with the other one that would not add some community benefit services to the contract. That's a valid point of view. Regarding the contract generally, and we'll have a report later this evening, I'd just like to mention that this turned into a real labor of love for us. This contract was first let by the city in 1992. It's been amended 11 times. So as we did with all of our labor agreements, we synthesized it into a single document. We think we now have a document which actually reflects the deal as it now is, and then we can talk about whether or not to amend it further. And as initially mentioned, we may need some more time on it, and, and we'll take your direction about that later this evening. Mr. I had an uncle that died in World War II, walking toward Berlin on a, on a part of the United States Army, and he died in defense of these rights of free speech. I don't know how we, as a community, benefit from the vulgarity and their racial slurs, but it has indeed protected free speech, and we will allow those people their, their five minutes if they choose to use it in that way. Mr. Greenspan talked about corruption in local government generally. I'm not aware of any in, in our local government here. I look around and see a lot of very dedicated, hardworking, honest people. But thank you for those suggestions. Elsie Messmit talked about agenda item number 14. Those are expenditures that were in connection with the festival, number of people attended over a two-day period. We had, I think, north of 10,000 people. And I thought it was a very together event. There were some costs associated with that, cost of sanitation, event rentals, et cetera. And that's what you're being asked to ratify tonight. Terry Cozad also mentioned that, asked why we did it. I, I think the answer is we're promoting community wellness. We're coming out of a COVID pandemic, and we're bringing back a number of different community events. I thought that was a safe event. It was a fun event, and I'm, I'm very proud of it. I thought the staff did a good job. Sergio, thank you for the compliment about the staff and their, their hard work. I don't think you need to thank the staff for their good work, but we, we appreciate the kind words. Annie Semillian, who is our contract representative, our contract street sweeper, that Athens contract would, if amended for community benefit services, have the waste taller, providing the city with money such that we could begin to get in better compliance with some of the federal requirements for best management practices and street sweeping rather than weekly. It would give us a funding source to get, instead of bi-weekly sweeping, we get weekly sweeping. It does not touch the nationwide contract. A contract is a serious thing, and we intend to honor it, the one that we have in place now. Runs for a number of more years. Mr. Elliott, the, the decision to not allow public media on the screen has been long business practice of this city and was my decision to affirm it. I don't think this community, these meetings would be better served by allowing people to begin to put disk drives, et cetera, onto city equipment, but maybe it's something I can look at. The Lark Ellen House was, was mentioned. That one has been a bit of a thorn in, in our side, my side. We put that demolition of that out to bid. We got two bids. The low bid was about $100,000. The next highest bid was twice that. The low bidder backed out. We put it back out to bid because I wasn't ready to spend $200,000 to tear down a house. We put it back out to bid again, and the results of that were opened last Thursday. The new low bid is $217,000. That's scheduled to come to you on July 5th, unless I can come up with some other alternative that comports with the city's purchasing procedures to find an alternative way to do it under the Uniform Cost Accounting Act. And I'm trying hard to do that. I've got a contractor that I'm in conversation with, but I'm well aware. We, this week have a, a private concern, hauling away all the trash, furniture, putrid sizable garbage outside, et cetera. They were there most of the day today. They'll be back tomorrow. I think outside will at least be broom cleaned by, by the end of day tomorrow. I'm, I'm aware that one, that one's a problem. Sarah Love asked about the police response on Sunday, April the 10th, very long response time. I agree, we do need more police officers, but we will get back to her about that particular incident, and thank you for the timestamp of it. Mr. Robinson, I'm not sure he mentioned with gene therapies and Big Pharma and nanotechnologies anything that's within the subject matter of our city. And I continue to encourage people, if they're getting medical advice, to get it from a Mr. Shoemaker made a, a point about how the community should understand that the school resources officer, in fact, police officers, that's a good partnership we have with the school district. We've got a meeting coming up with the Subcommittee of Council and Subcommittee of School Board, and we will review that relationship and hopefully help to educate everybody about what we're doing and why we're doing it. And Mr. Daru, thank you for the thank you. I'm glad you got good service from the police department. I think that's all I've got this evening.
Thank you, city manager.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So in reference to Sarah Love, I've been extremely vocal about Gascon. And because I had the firsthand experience of his ineffective policies, I've personally seen the destruction of it at my work, including death, more than once. We did invite Gascon personally to come to our council office. I mean, council meeting, been flexible with whatever date and time he can. He personally did not want to come, and he sent somebody else in his place who couldn't even answer specific questions. So I was frustrated. But we did have the privilege of having Sheriff Villanueva's presence in here in person to answer a lot of the questions that the residents had. The council actually voted four to one of no confidence with Gascon. And yes, I do support the recall 100%. I signed it the first time, and I signed it again. Family and friends signed it. And I urge the residents and everybody else to go ahead and sign that before the July's deadline, and when it gets in the ballot, to vote him out. And hopefully, the residents can vote somebody else in. So in reference to that, that personally, I would like to see him out. And then in regards to JD, thank you very much for sharing something positive we don't hear often here at the council. It's usually just one-sided. I don't mind hearing, you know, the bad, but the problem is sometimes that's all the residents bring up, is just focusing on only the bad. It's kind of nice to hear both sides. So I do appreciate some good that the, to hear the positive things that our police did, and I'm glad that they took care of that for you. So thank you for coming up and sharing that. Other than that, I just wanted to just address those two. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tabatay.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I actually had a concern regarding one of the public comments and, and obviously some of the questioning. So as, as the community knows and everyone knows here, I'm, I'm very involved in, in youth sports and, and coaching. And so I have a lot of relationships in the travel ball, youth sports. And so, you know, at our last meeting, I had made a motion to have this, the city send out an RFP for operation of the Sportsplex, and, and that died. But from what I understand, Sergio Palos has stated that he's working with staff on an exclusive to operate.
Not, not exclusive.
So this, this is what is being shared with, with the, the youth sports community, you know, and to listen to his public comments and to talk about the operation of the restaurants, and then to see council start to, to question him, which, which is totally against what we normally do. You know, I thought he was giving a presentation, actually. And so this is a grave concern, right? Because the, the operation of the, of the Sportsplex is, is to be done by the city. There, there should be transparency. One organization, NCS, should, number one, not have an exclusive right. And, and we, we should also have an understanding of, of how these, these contracts are being made. Now, from what I understand, from, from people I've spoken to, there's, there are documents, there are emails, there are things that are being sent where he is representing himself as the operator of the Sportsplex. And, and so, you know, and to today's presentation, or his public comment was very concerning. So if, if staff could respond to that, thank you.
If I may.
Okay, city manager and Roxanne, please.
If I may, through the chair.
Let me start.
Okay.
Two-part harmony, through the chair. Like to try and clarify that question. I think it's a fair question as to the negotiations for operation of the Sportsplex. We either have a RFP protocol or we have protocol chaos. We have not issued an RFP. We have occasionally gotten unsolicited requests. Would the city be interested in entering into negotiations? Our reply has been consistent, we are not issuing an RFP. We're not requesting proposals at this time. If somebody wanted to give an unsolicited proposal, we would, of course, if it's a real property matter, schedule that for closed session, real property conversation. I've never met the gentleman, so I don't know what he's interested in doing, but I've never talked to him. And I'll let our assistant city manager speak to the operation of the Sportsplex. She's running it, and I think she's doing a good job.
Through the chair, if I may, and just to piggyback on city manager Carmen's response and to answer your question, so a couple things. Number one, there is no exclusivity. There's no exclusive use. We've had a number of organizations who have contacted us about that. We've let all of them know. We've been emphatic with, we're opening up, it's fair, there's no exclusive use. NCS did reserve, paid for the use of the sports complex for this past weekend for their one tournament. There are no other tournaments that they have scheduled thus far. In addition to that, we do have applications from other interested parties. U triple S A is one of them. Another one that we have, let me pull it up right now. Another one that we have is Elite Fast Pitch. We have a, what is this, this WSL, and then of course, our senior league tournaments. So those are the pending applications that we have right now. So again, any type of exclusive use or any organization representing or misrepresenting themselves as either an agent of the city is taken very seriously. And as those allegations are brought forward, that is something that we, we do take a look at and also talk to the staff members because, as you're aware, the sports complex has been receiving interest since BLD left. So again, even with previous supervisors that I've had conversations with, just to get a better understanding of the history and how they allocated the fields, the marching orders have always been the same, that it's fair across the board. Should we get to a point that a, we have a multitude of applicants coming in, we would go to a lottery system. But at this point, you know, city council as a whole hasn't directed an RFP. If that is the consideration of council, council, which is to go that direction, then certainly the city would comply. But again, there is no exclusivity. Any organization, any individual representing exclusive use will be handled. So please, I want you to rest assured that any of those types of allegations will be looked into on all ends.
Thank you, Roxanne. And then I'll add to that, if, if you have access to those accusations, please share. I mean, those are serious things that are being said, and we'd love to get to the bottom of it. But I think we all agree that's always been clear to everyone in the community, it's non-exclusive. I think we still share that. So yeah, if someone's telling you that, please do share. Councilman Wu.
Yeah, I think our city attorney should address this issue if a misrepresentation from any group, and that we should take action against any person doing that. Supposedly, the city council agreed this should be run by the city, and city should have, everybody have a fair chance. So maybe city attorney, you can address this issue?
Roxanne and I have been working on this. We're looking into this. I think this is coming for, on the, on the next meeting, or the second meeting in July for discussion. And we'll follow up, we'll look, we'll get to the bottom of it, and if there is a misrepresentation, we will handle it.
Yeah, if we have anybody have any evidence, would you provide, what was it, attorney to look into it?
Yep. Thank you. All right. Any, oh, well, now we're moving on to the city manager's report.
Thank you. I know you've got other business. I'll be really brief with the manager's report tonight. First, wanted to make mention that our summer concert series starts tomorrow night right here at the Civic Center. We hope to see everyone. Also, next week's concert is with Country Nation, and we hope people take advantage of those. It's a very pleasant way to spend a summer evening. Fourth of July, Heroes Parade and Street Fair. People are, are welcome. It's not too late to participate. If you're interested, please contact my office. Fireworks are an ongoing issue. We don't allow them, and we do have a reward program. If somebody wants to report fireworks activity, they can call the, the business number at the police station, 626-939-8585. There are a number of Parks and Rec activities that are up and running, and we're trying to advertise all through July. The city will be offering water days at the park, and they can call the Cameron Park Community Center to get more details. Summer basketball is underway. They can call Steve Zaragosa in our, in our Parks and Rec Division to get information about basketball. Summer sports classes are, are beginning. We've got five-week classes that are starting in mid-July. And I wanted to mention, this is a highlight for us, we're doing a ribbon cutting for the brand-new playground at Friendship Park. I was out the other day. They hadn't quite finished up pulling off the fence, and some construction stuff was still sprinkled around. But it'll be open for, I want to say open for business, open for play, starting at 9:00 AM on Wednesday, June the 29th. I hope the public can come and take advantage of it. It's really, it's really pretty cool. Lastly, I just wanted to mention, there's a municipal election this fall. Nomination period is July 18th through August 12th. Anyone that needs information can call our assistant city clerk to make an appointment. That's all I've got this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to our regular business, starting with the consent calendar. Would anyone like to pull anything from consent? Councilman Tabatay.
Yes, four, six, and 14.
Anything else anyone would like to pull? Okay, see, none. Do, do I have a motion to approve one through 14, except for four, six, and 14?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Diaz and a second by council member Tabatay. Before I take a roll, I need to read an ordinance title into the record. Ordinance number 2498, an ordinance of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, repealing and replacing Division One generally and Division Two purchasing system, and amending Division Three contracting for public projects of Article Seven, purchases and sales of Chapter Two Administration of the West Covina Municipal Code. Councilmember Tabatay?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Castellanos?
Aye.
Item passes.
Thank you. Takes us to item number four. Councilmember Tabatay, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a, a couple of questions. Initially, when the Health Department was presented to us, we were presented that it would cause zero, zero dollars in taxpayer funds. When we approved our ARPA spending plan, we had approved 98,000 to TransTech, and then the rest of the funds were allocated to different needs in the city. So I see now we are allocating half a million dollars of, of those ARPA funds to the Health Department. So if staff can go ahead and clarify for us, which, which projects originally approved, are, are we canceling or postponing in order to make this half million dollars available to TransTech?
Through the chair. The range of eligible activities for the Recovery Act funds is, is broad. And we did have a couple of And we did have a couple of town hall meetings and talk about what potential uses would be for those, meetings even here in this chamber on off-council nights. And then we presented the recommendation for the ARPA funds as part of the adopted budget. This report recommends the use, the designated use of some of those monies for health-related services. We do not yet know what the State of California Department of Public Health will be requiring of the city to get a Health Department stood up. They're working very hard on this, we're meeting with them regularly, not every two weeks, but at least every three weeks. In this case, we are anticipating, and have a pretty broad contract in your packet tonight, that will enable us to move in the directions that we think they're going to be requiring. Specifically, we think they're going to require a community health needs assessment, and a community health improvement program, and two or three essential divisions of a Health Department. This would provide those ARPA funds for those purposes, we do not yet know with specificity exactly what the state will require, but we want to be ready for that when that moment arrives.
Now, I understand that the ARPA was very broad in what we could spend the money on, but staff presented to us exactly how we were allocating the $19 million, where the funds would go, how they met ARPA, we had the town halls, and in that, $98,000 was allocated to TransTech. The other half million was allocated to other needs within the city. So my question was, which of those items that we originally allocated this half million dollars to is being canceled, or postponed, or other funds are being used? I'd like to know that. What trade-off are we making?
Through the chair, if I may, Stephanie, Secma Finance Director. In the ARPA funding, we had what I would call a placeholder project for fire station repairs. And it is where we put the difference of what we knew was eligible for the nine-point-something million that we have in the eligible categories, meaning that are very specific, it has to tie to COVID in some way, shape, or form. So that placeholder project was reduced, because that placeholder project has about three-point-something million in it currently, but we cannot spend 100% of that on a fire station repair, because we cannot justify that 100% of it is COVID-related. We could probably spend a portion of the project on it to say that it goes towards the ambulatory side of the building that services EMS, which could then be COVID-related, but to say that a whole project is, couldn't be justifiable, isn't, not necessarily recommended by the Treasury. And so, that's the placeholder project that was reduced for the $500,000 to go towards this project, which is eligible within its own category in the ARPA funding.
Okay, so you can see how, in terms of transparency, that's very problematic, in that when, when the community is presented with how money's going to be allocated and spent, that, you know, we did not get a financial plan of how much the Health Department was going to cost. We haven't had any long-term view. And so, I think everyone in the audience, and everyone here, can understand that we knew it was going to cost more than the $98,000. And so, it looks very much like placeholders were put in order so there would be funding available for the Health Department, and when we presented to the community, we presented zero, then we presented $98,000, now we're presenting another half million dollars. We don't know what Phase Three is going to cost, there's been, again, there has been no planning, no presentation, we haven't had another presentation on cost, on steps, on what Step Three may look like, if we get past Phase Two. Again, you know, this is a big issue, you know? If we're going to tell the community that there's no money available for things like small businesses, which, you know, were eligible for ARPA, is not available for rent relief, is not, you know, eligible for residents in the community, and we're going to tell them that, and then I'm going to go, and I'm going to sell what the City Manager tells me, and says, no, look, we have, we have infrastructure needs, and we're going to fix our infrastructure, and then to be told, well, actually, no, we didn't have that much of a need for our fire, that we actually do have this half million dollars, that we could, that, that is not transparency. That is problematic.
So clarify, I didn't say there wasn't a need, I said that in order, we can't 100% fund that need with that source of funding.
Okay, so I guess, I'm unsure then, where the original, how we justified that original amount then, prior, and then how, how we not, so then, could, could we infer that there's more money that is sitting as a placeholder, that when we get to Phase Three of the Health Department, we could find another $2, $3 million? Is that, is that fair to infer?
If Council so chose to move it from that project to the other, it would be ineligible use to be moved to.
So I'd like to make a motion to, to table any movement forward with Health Services until we get a full financial and costing-out plan with, with the funding sources to continue all the way through the completion. So that's, that's my motion, to table any, any further movement with the Health Department without a dedicated costing-out and funding source to go forward.
Mr. Mayor, that would, so your motion would be to not approve this amendment with what you just stated after?
Yes, that is correct.
Do I have a second? Okay, don't have a second, eyes for lack of a second. Any other questions of staff?
No, thank you, Mayor.
I'd like to move this to, to be approved.
Okay, we have a motion to approve? I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second, roll call, please.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Diaz, and a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado. Councilmember Tabataba?
No.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-1.
Moving on to number six, consideration of utilizing the Art in Public Places Commission. Councilman Tabataba?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have a concern with the mayor's appointment to the Public Places Subcommittee. Recently, the Los Angeles Times revealed that the CEO of Dell Records is being charged with business dealings with the Mexican cartels, Mexican drug cartels. I'm concerned, because one of the members of the Subcommittee Commissioner, Brian Gutierrez, is an executive with Dell Records, and in the past, Dell Records, through Brian Gutierrez, has provided funding to the city when the Police Annual Report, it was Dell Records that produced that for us. And so, considering the current legal entanglements of Dell Records and their executives, I would move that, considering that the Art in Public Places is going to be dealing with funding, that I move that Brian Gutierrez be removed from the Public Places Subcommittee, and be replaced by someone of the mayor's choosing, again, that's, that's my motion.
You said, was it him that was charged, or someone else?
So it's the CEO of Dell Records, what's concerning is Brian, Brian's a Vice President in Dell Records. And so, you know, funds that are coming through the cartels and moving through Dell Records, it's concerning for me, and I think it puts the city in a, in a possible problematic situation. Again, you know, I think that considering the news, and what's happening with that company, and, you know, Brian's relationship with that company, and that Dell Records has, you know, been involved in the city, and has made donations, and provided resources, again, their connection with, you know, the Mexican cartels, it's concerning, and so, it's out of caution that I'm moving, that he be removed and replaced by someone else. That's, that's, that's the concern.
A question for our City Attorney, is, do we have exposure there?
Can I say something quickly?
There doesn't seem like-
City Attorney, can I have, ask one question before?
Sure.
Has that, this guy has been committed? I don't, I know nothing about the news, I just heard this from, okay, Mr. Tabataba, but is this guy has been committed? Is that, if he not been committed, is that innocent before proving guilty? Okay, so, so what I'm saying is this, okay, if this guy commit, okay, is guilty, this is alleged, then we will have to look into it, the situation, but if this is just a prosecution, is that possible, okay? This is, this guy has, this guy has been committed yet?
It seems like it's just at the charging stage, it's not the individual that's recommended for your approval tonight, and I have no issue, no legal issue with you moving forward with staff recommendation to appoint him.
So, yeah, so, you know, and I understand what Councilman Wu is saying, again, this is, you know, through the mayor's appointment, and it's your decision to make. I do think it's a concern, and I think, you know, for the best interest of the city, I am moving that Brian Gutierrez be removed, and replaced by some other planning commissioner from the other four that we currently have. Thank you.
No problem. Yeah, thank you for that, I think I'd rather wait till this concludes, but thank you for bringing that up. And do I have any other comments or questions?
I don't want to say it, but I don't want to bring personal issue, political, okay, okay, fight, okay, between two Brian, okay, and they bring to the dial regarding all this wild accusation and the potential issue. Okay, if you have issue, I think you should go to DA, okay, go to our City Attorney, okay, and talk about potentially he could make any other issue, all the money he donate to the city, that basically problematic, okay? And other than that, it sounded, this sound like very political, okay, and he of grandstanding. And I think this is not, okay, for people to attack each other.
Dell Records provided the resources, and Dell Records CEO has been charged, and so, as a representative of the city, and my job as steward of the community, this is a concern that needs to be brought up, and the residents need to be made aware. Again, this is, this is, the mayor gets to choose who's on the commission, and so, I want to make sure that the mayor is aware of what's occurring, and that he does his due diligence, and make the proper decisions for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, we'll watch this closely, thank you for that, and if you hear of anything else in this topic, let us know, please. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I want to move the motion, number six, to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lopez Vi, I'm sorry, a motion by Councilman Wu, and a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado. Councilmember Tabataba?
No.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos?
Aye.
Takes us to number 14. Councilman Tabataba?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, hello, I think, I have a couple concerns, I think my biggest concern is with oversight of the sportsplex. Again, I think I addressed it during the City Manager Report, or when he was addressing public comment. But, you know, one item that really stuck out to me in the staff report was the fact that we have an estimate of the attendance at the Spring Festival. Now, we should have an accurate count of the attendance, right? Everyone who came through the gate should have been accounted for, we should have monies, there's plenty of money that is flowing through the sportsplex, and I have a concern, again, that we aren't doing our proper oversight, and that, you know, if, if, if we don't have an exact number of people who attended the Spring Festival, I just don't understand why, why that is.
So, through the chair, if I may, so the question is in regards to the exact number, correct? One of the things that we, when we take a look at attendance, one of the reasons why we do an estimate, especially for an event like this, is because there were certain segments of the attendees who weren't charged, and those were children 10, 12 years and under. So we wouldn't necessarily have a ticket count for them, and not every child that attended the event necessarily purchased a wristband-
I understand, so, but how, how are we overseeing the money that's coming in? Like, if we, if we, if we don't have an accounting of everyone who, you should be able to give me a number, 2,600 children under 10 came in for free, right? 7,000 adults, paying adults, you know, 3,800 West Covina residents who paid at this amount, right? 7,000 outsiders. So, again, if we don't, if we're not overseeing, and then I have a sports league like NCS is coming in and negotiating with staff member, and we're not, we're not overseeing, you know, funds, and how much money is coming in through the gate, how much money is being, being paid out, right? Again, this is big issues.
So, what's interesting to me, Councilmember Tabataba, too, about some of the points that you bring up, number one, great point about, you know, children, it's under a certain age, having a tick, or having a tally for that, that is something that can be worked into the system. And you're absolutely right, as far as staff making, as staff making negotiations, however, that's not what's occurring. There is a fee schedule that is utilized for the sportsplex, that when this one tournament was booked, that the staff sat down, had those conversations with them, and gave them a price. And so, those are all, that can all be tallied through our software system, which is DASH. Not quite sure, we can, we could talk about this further, I'm not quite sure how the NCS relates to this particular agenda item.
So, well, I'm just, this agenda item, I'm concerned with, because we have expenditures here, and I'm concerned with the oversight of how we are accounting for all the money that's going in, all the money that's going out, and from, from the staff report. So my question is based on this staff report that I'm receiving, that is lacking in information. And so, if you're, if you're, if you're going to present me with a staff report that gives an estimate, when you should have exact numbers, and when community members have been asking for months, on what are the expenditures of the Spring Festival, what is the revenues of the Spring Festival, right? When we're asking for numbers on the sportsplex? I mean, I've been asking for months for operations, hours, staffing, you know, which public works officials are working the sportsplex, where are they not working, right? What was, you know, police staffing at the sportsplex, right? So these are all questions that have not been answered, have not been presented, and so it's concerning, because a lot of money flows through that complex.
So the purpose of this particular staff report talks about the ratifications of the expenditures, of two particular expenditures regarding the Spring Festival. That was the purpose of this staff report. Does the staff report give an estimate as far as festival attendees? Yes, it does. And we discussed it, and to your point, I understand, about the children, you know, the children, and creating that tally for it. If I may, I mean, and I'm looking to the City Attorney about if I- If I may, I mean, and I'm looking to the city attorney about if I can-
Yeah, I believe the question's been asked and you've answered it. I think we now can have a motion, ask for a motion.
It's fine, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll make the motion to approve this.
Okay. And it's not a bad idea regarding counting the, you know, the children. So we could do that going forward on events. And we have a motion on the table.
I'll second.
And a second. Roll call, please.
The second was Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Yes.
A motion by Mayor Protem Diaz, a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado. Councilmember Tabata.
Aye.
Councilman Wu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz.
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos.
Aye.
Item passes 5-0.
Thank you. That takes us, pass the consent calendar to public hearings. Number 15 is regarding ADU's consideration of the zone change, number 22-02. And this matter set for public hearing. Will the city clerk verify the proper legal notice has been given?
Proper legal notice has been given, Mayor.
Thank you. At this point, I shall open up the public hearing on ordinance number 2,500. First, your presentation by the staff and then we shall hear from those in favor and then those opposed. Who will present the staff report?
Our planning manager, Joanne Burns, is here for that purpose tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council and also members of the public. This would be the second time the ADU ordinance would be amended after today's meeting if the city council approves this amendment. This ordinance would address the written comments sent by the State Department of Housing and Community Development in February of this year. Up on the projector are a list of, a summary of a list of the changes that are being proposed. Most of them are changes that would, that would just clarify, that are just clarification of what we already impose as part of the current ordinance. But however, the state thought that it wasn't clear. So we are clarifying those particular items that the state listed in their letter. And also a cross-reference of the government code regarding the section that states that ADUs are not available for sale because ADUs are allowed to be sold in certain circumstances, such as if, it would be like a project, a project that is built by a nonprofit like Habitat's for Humanity. In this cases, ADUs can be for sale according to the government code. So there's just a cross-reference for that. The other, the other section is just to clarify that ADUs with exterior staircases are allowed and also exterior staircases are not allowed in between the side property line in the existing building, but it would be allowed in the rear. With this, staff, it is recommended that the city council conduct the public hearing and introduce the ordinance, ordinance number 2500. If the city council has any questions, staff is available to answer.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? None? Okay. So, since there, well, since there's no questions, we'll open up the public hearing. Do we have any speakers who are in favor?
I receive no speaker cards or no communication on this item.
None in favor or opposed?
Correct.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move the motion to approve. Second.
First and second. Roll call, please.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Councilmember Tabata. Before I take roll call, I need to read the title of the ordinance into the record.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 2500, an ordinance of the city council of West Covina, California, amending portions of Division 11 accessory dwelling units of Article 12 Special Regulations for Unique Uses of Chapter 26 Zoning of the West Covina Municipal Code to Authorize Accessory Dwelling Units and Junior Accessory Dwelling Units Consistent with State Law Requirements. Councilmember Tabata.
Aye.
Councilman Wu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz. Mayor Costellanos.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Takes us to number 16. That's a public hearing regarding consideration of the West Covina Auto Plaza Business Improvement District. Who will present this report?
This is going to be by our assistant city manager, Paulina Morales.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. The item before you tonight is the public hearing to consider the Auto Plaza Business Improvement District Fiscal Year 2022-23 Annual Report and Assessment. The Auto Plaza BID, or Business Improvement District, is composed of seven dealership or benefit zones within the Auto Plaza. It was initially created to construct, to construct the reader board off the freeway. And it also now includes the monument sign off of Azusa Avenue in Garvey. The BID is funded by the assessments that the businesses place on themselves through the annual report. And they are also go, so the city manages the BID and does get funding for administering the BID. So these are the seven different benefit zones, one for each of the dealership sites. Every year, the Auto Plaza Advisory Board hosts a meeting. This year, they held it on April 27, '22. We held the public meeting with the city council to adopt the resolution of intention in June 7. And tonight, we're holding the public hearing for approval to place the assessments on the tax rule. This might be a little bit small, but the attachment is in your staff report. The report for you is for approval to assess the district's, the same assessment rate that they had last year. One of the expenditures on, for the BID is a agreement that they had with the city to loan them. I believe it was close to approximately $500,000 to update the reader board to what it is now, the LED sign. So part of that is the repayment of the city loan to the city. If you have any questions, I am here to answer. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of city staff? None. Do we have anyone in favor wishing to speak?
City Clerk's office received no comments in favor or opposition of this item.
All right, no cards, so I'll make a motion to approve. I have a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I have a motion by Mayor Costellanos and a second by Councilmember Tabata. Councilmember Tabata.
Aye.
Councilman Wu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz.
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos.
Aye.
Item passes 5-0.
All right, thank you. Takes us to item number 17. It's our fiscal year 2021-2022 Capital Improvement Program Status Update. Who will present this?
Mayor, this is a fun report. This is where the money is. We've asked Paulina Morales to present the report in summary fashion and briefly. And we've got city engineering staff available to answer questions when you have them.
Thank you.
Good evening again. So myself and Okan Demuschi, our CIP manager, are going to be providing the presentation this evening. So first, we're going to be going over the CIP projects that were budgeted for this year that we've completed in this fiscal year. This is an overview of the six CIP projects that have been completed. They include the fiscal year 2019-20 Residential Streets Rehabilitation Project that was completed in August 2021. And we'll be going into a little bit more detail about what that included at a later slide. The Shadow Oak Park Improvements, which was the bathroom project. La Puente Road and Fort Castle, new traffic signal that went up there with, in partnership with the city of Walnut. Fire Station 4 Parking Lot Improvements. The Lark Ellen and Grove Center Pedestrian Improvement Project that was with the city of Covina. And then the 2021 Residential Streets Rehabilitation Project. And like I mentioned, that we will also be going into more detail later in the presentation. Now we'll be going into the current projects, the CIP projects that are currently under construction. As part of our park CIP projects this year, we're updating playground equipment. Play, Palm View, Aroma and Walmarado Parks are getting much-needed replacement of their playgrounds rubberized surfaces. Project is anticipated to complete, be completed by the end of the month. The city is slated to install three new playgrounds this year with the first at Shadow Oak Park that has already been completed. The other two playgrounds will be installed at Friendship Park and Cortez Parks. In addition to the new playground at Friendship Park, the improvements include updates to the basketball courts as well as the fitness equipment and signage throughout the parks. We're also addressing, which was at your last council meeting, trip hazards and updating lighting to provide a safer park environment for our residents. As mentioned in the city manager's report by city manager, Mr. Carmini, we are hosting a ribbon cutting for this park next Wednesday, June 29 at 9:00 a.m. And we encourage everyone to attend. The other playground that is being installed is at Cortez Park, which is anticipated to be completed by the end of July and will most likely be hosting a ribbon cutting as well. Additional park improvements, the following two projects are much-needed improvements in our community. I think the council and staff have heard many complaints from our residents and we're very excited to be proceeding with the rehabilitation of Cameron and Walmarado Park restrooms. The city has now, through these two projects, developed a template for park restrooms that can be used at any future, for any future restroom park improvements as needed and as funding is available. Cameron Park restroom improvements will commence in August and will be completed this coming fall. Walmarado Park restroom, the bid was approved from, by our city council at the last council meeting and staff is working with the contractor to finalize a schedule for start of construction and do anticipate a completion date by the end of this year. As some of you may have noticed, our city hall restrooms are under construction right now. And this is part of our facility's CIP projects. So we are currently under construction for renovations to those two restrooms, the men and women's, and we are slated to be completed with both by the end of August of this year. So part of the CIP projects this year is our citywide pavement marking, striping and signage improvements. And this is a direct result from our residents. It's, these CIP projects, or project is comprised of recommendations made by our community members for traffic calming improvements throughout the city. They are taken to our traffic committee and our traffic committee makes recommendations to the city council. So this is the initial 26 intersection improvements throughout the city. And at the last June 27 city council meeting, you approved an additional 18 recommendations for traffic calming, including improvements at Cherry Wood. And staff is looking to incorporate them as we find funding to complete those recommendations. In addition, the project is the installation of a traffic signal at the inner intersection of Cameron and Baranca. This is a project from the last fiscal year, but we were able to get it started this February and it's anticipated to be completed by August of 2022. For fiscal year 2021-22, the Residential Street Rehabilitation Project includes improvements to over 2.8 million square feet of streets. The project commenced in May and the contractor is currently finishing the sewer seal and coordinating the additional striping. The project is anticipated to be completed this September. And if you can see on the map, that's the area in the blue is the areas that were part of this CIP project. So the city currently has three CIP projects under construction. This includes the Azusa Avenue Sewer Lift Station and the rehabilitation of sewer mains at Azusa and Citrus. The Azusa Lift Station project, I know, has been going, ongoing with several delays. I know residents have been seeing the impacts of closures along that area. But the project is on track to be completed by this, this fall. The other two CIP projects include the sewer main replacement at Azusa Avenue between Bedillo Street and Puente Road and at Citrus from Cortez Park to Vanderhoof Drive. The city is rehabilitating the existing sewer pipes by bursting the existing pipes and replacing them with new sewer pipes. And I think Okan can describe that in much more detail if you need. But this method limits the impacts to traffic, so there's no trenching, as no trenching is required. Both projects are anticipated to be completed by October 2022. Our upcoming sewer main replacement project will be on portions of Glenview Road, Michelle Street and Azusa and Azusa. And TransTech is currently working on preparing the bid package. And as this was mentioned earlier, Lark Ellen House demolition, we know this is a priority to remove the eyesore from, you know, our Cameron Park. So we are currently working on bringing a award of bid for your consideration at the July 5 council meeting. And then I'll turn it over to Okan.
Good evening, council. The next project on the list is Major Street Rehabilitation Azusa Avenue, which is currently on design phase. This is a state-funded project and the project is in design phase. It's a pavement rehabilitation project on Azusa Avenue between the north city limit to Vine Avenue on the north segment. And we're currently waiting for state approvals from Caltrans E76 Coordination. And we're going to be starting construction next year on this project. The next project on the list is Underground Utility District Number 8, Merced Avenue. This is essentially a coordination between Southern California Edison. And this was brought to council in the previous meetings. And at this time, Southern California Edison is working on the planning phase of the project and anticipated completion is 2024. The next project on the list is another regional project, which is in coordination with city of Covina. It's a Citrus Avenue Rehabilitation Project. And it is essentially a pavement rehabilitation asphalt resurfacing project on Citrus Avenue on the north segment. And a portion of the project is in city of West Covina jurisdiction. So it's a coordination between two agencies. The anticipated completion is late summer for this project.
Sorry. So as mentioned, we're going to get a little bit more detail about the street rehabilitation projects. I don't know, Okan, if you want to go into more specific. But the last four street rehabilitation projects that have been conducted are under construction right now. Total, I think, 16% of street improvements throughout our city. And so this is each project and how much sewer sealing, how much asphalt resurfacing and the total square footage that were improved throughout our community. Which, as you can see, for the fiscal year 2021-22, it's over 2.8. We're very excited. And then an overview of this fiscal year is the CIP projects. We've completed six at 4.2 million. We currently have 16 projects under construction totaling 15.3 million. So total 22 projects this year over 19 million worth in CIP projects. We're here to answer any questions.
Question from Councilmember Wu.
On last page, the previous one regarding the 21-22, then more than $2 million compared with 19-20 or 18-17, 17-18, almost double. So is that increased, almost double, meaning are we cover more ground or because the inflation? Okay, because this is a lot of, okay, funding into the repayment. Hopefully, we cover more rather than spending a lot of money, but the same coverage. So maybe you can answer that?
I apologize. I should have clarified. This is square footages.
Oh.
It's not money.
It's not the money. Sorry, I'm falling asleep, okay? I bet. Meaning we cover much more. Thank you so much.
Be more animated next time.
Listen, no, I ask question.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment.
Sure.
Can we make sure that we coordinate when they do the striping on the streets with the slurring and the asphalt to make sure that they do the slurring first and paving of the asphalt and then doing the striping of the street and- of the asphalt and then doing the striping of the street and the crosswalks? Because I know we had a problem, I think it was on California, I think it was on your street.
Which one?
Where they had just, they had just painted the streets, and then they went over it with the slurry.
Oh, I see. Okay, yes.
So I just.
We definitely can make sure we take that into consideration.
Thank you for that. Any more questions or comments? Well, thank you. Great, great projects moving forward. I appreciate it. Good work. Thank you, guys, and we'll open up the public hearing. Do we have any cards?
Not a public hearing, mayor.
Oh, it's not?
Just department matter.
Cool. And.
Receive and file.
No vote. Perfect. Takes us to our final agenda item regarding SB 1383. Thank you, senators.
Senator.
It's true.
Good evening, council. The next project on the list is major street rehabilitation Azusa Avenue, which is currently on design phase. This is a state-funded project, and the project is in design phase. It's a pavement rehabilitation project on Azusa Avenue between the north city limit to Vine Avenue on the north segment, and we're currently waiting for state approvals from Caltrans E76 coordination, and we're going to be starting construction next year on this project. The next project on the list is Underground Utility District Number Eight, Merced Avenue. This is essentially a coordination between Southern California Edison, and this was brought to council in the previous meetings, and at this time, Southern California Edison is working on the planning phase of the project, and anticipated completion is 2024. The next project on the list is another regional project, which is in coordination with City of Covina. It's a Citrus Avenue Rehabilitation Project, and it is essentially a pavement rehabilitation, asphalt resurfacing project on Citrus Avenue on the north segment, and a portion of the project is in City of West Covina jurisdiction, so it's a coordination between two agencies. The anticipated completion is late summer for this project.
Sorry. So as mentioned, we're going to get a little bit more detail about the street rehabilitation projects. I don't know, Okon, if you want to go into more specific, but the last four street rehabilitation projects that have been conducted or under construction right now total, I think, 16% of street improvements throughout our city. And so this is each project and how much surrey sealing, how much asphalt resurfacing in the total square footage that were improved throughout our community, which, as you can see, for the fiscal year 2021-22, it's over 2.8. We're very excited. And then an overview of this fiscal year is the CIP projects. We've completed six at 4.2 million. We currently have 16 projects under construction totaling 15.3 million. So total 22 projects this year over 19 million worth in CIP projects. We're here to answer any questions.
Question from council member Wu.
On last page, the previous one regarding the 21-22, then more than $2 million compared with 19, 20, or 18, 17, 18, almost double. So is that increased, almost double, meaning are we cover more ground or because the inflation? Okay, because this is a lot of, okay, funding into the repayment. Hopefully, we cover more rather than spending a lot of money, but the same coverage. So maybe you can answer that?
I apologize. I should clarify, this is square footages.
Oh.
It's not money.
It's not the money.
No doubt.
Sorry, I'm falling asleep, okay? I bet. Meaning we cover much more.
Be more animated next time.
Listen, no, I ask question.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment.
Sure.
Can we make sure that we coordinate when they do the striping on the streets with the slurring and the asphalt to make sure that they do the slurring first and paving of the asphalt and then doing the striping of the street and the crosswalks? Because I know we had a problem, I think it was on California, I think it was on your street.
Which one?
Where they had just, they had just painted the streets, and then they went over it with the slurry.
Oh, I see. Okay, yes.
So I just.
We definitely can make sure we take that into consideration.
Thank you for that. Any more questions or comments? Well, thank you. Great, great projects moving forward. I appreciate it. Good work. Thank you, guys, and we'll open up the public hearing. Do we have any cards?
Not a public hearing, mayor.
Oh, it's not?
Just department matter.
Cool. And.
Receive and file.
No vote. Perfect. Takes us to our final agenda item regarding SB 1383. Thank you, senators.
Senator.
It's true.
Good evening. This presentation should be fairly brief. So Senate Bill 1383 is an unfounded mandate established statewide to target targeted to reduce emissions of short-lived climate pollutants such as methane gas, which is emitted by organic waste. Compliance with this bill requires an increase in services across seven categories. These regulations have prompted changes to our current trash agreement with Athens. Per Senate Bill 1383, residents will be required to separate food waste and food spoiled paper from the trash. In February 2022, a proposed amendment to the contract was presented to city council to implement these changes. After discussion, the amendment was tabled, and staff continued negotiations. As a result of that, the city has two options to consider. Option one is to amend the agreement to incorporate Senate Bill 1383 implementation and beautification services, in which Athens would provide at least 100 hours per week of graffiti removal services valued at 550,000, bus shelter cleaning and maintenance to all city bus stops and shelters on a quarterly basis, an annual city improvement fee totaling 1.2 million, which may be utilized for street sweeping, storm drain cleaning, or landscaping services as the city so chooses. In exchange for the improvement fee and additional services, however, the city would agree to a three-year extension to the no-trigger clause of the agreement, which means the city would not be able to provide a notice of intent to terminate the agreement prior to August 2027. The other option is to amend the restated agreement by only implementing Senate Bill 1383. All of the other terms of the agreement, as agreed upon through prior amendments, would remain in effect. At this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant City Manager Paulina Morales to go over some other considerations related to Senate Bill 1383.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good evening again. So the item or the table before you, city staff released a request for proposals for services to assist the city in implementing and meeting the compliance requirements for SB 1383. The RFP requested three tasks, one for the development of an implementation plan for West Covina, number two to assist with implementation or execution of that plan, and number three to facilitate discussions with our current trash hauler. So the city received a total of six proposals, and as you can see in the table above, that they ranged from 91,000 for services all the way up to 224,000 with SimCo providing hourly rates and not a total. Most of the proposals did include providing all of the requested services with SW consultants and SimCo providing only assistance on the implementation of plan and not implementing the SB 1383 compliance regulations. So if you have any questions on that. City staff also reached out to the San Gabriel Valley Council, Council of Governments, the COG. They did implement and develop the San Gabriel Valley Regional Food Recovery Program, and the program supports SB 1383 compliance with edible food recovery regulations, which is a component of SB 13. It would include assisting with the commercial edible food waste generators and identifying and fostering partnerships of local food protocols. Cities can participate in this program. There's various levels of participation from Phase One, which was marketing outreach, and then Number Two, I think they're going to be doing, sorry, capacity assessments Phase One, and then developing and implementing the food recovery program as Phase Two. As you can see there, the listed cities that are participating, full participation in the program in the San Gabriel Valley. So the scope of services that the, the city received a proposal from CS Engineers, which is a consultant for the COG, and the scope of services would be project management, capacity and compliance assessment, public outreach and education, final report and inspection program. The proposal is for 151,000, and it is required for three years, and it's a pilot program, so we would have to participate for all three years. The city would still need to address the organic waste regulations, which is not part of this program, as well as record-keeping, reporting, and issuing inspections for the food recovery program. There is two potential funding options for moving forward with this, participating in this program. The city did receive $149,000 grant specifically for implementation of SB 1383 requirements, and we're checking with, was it?
CalRecycle?
Cal, sorry, CalRecycle to ensure if we can utilize those grant funds towards this program. The other option is Fund 128, which is a special revenue fund for solid waste reduction, which could be applied towards this program. And so I'll turn it over back to Stephanie.
Thank you. So in summary, staff's recommendation tonight is to, for council to consider a couple of options here. One is the food recovery program with the COG and to either amend the agreement with Athens to either include the beautification summer services or not to include the services and just implement SB 1383, or to direct the city manager to continue negotiations with Athens. That concludes my presentation, and at this time, I'll take any questions.
Any questions of staff? Okay, well, I've got a question. How about have we had discussions with Athens related to one of the initial iterations of the potential agreement talked about the price being spread out through the residential rates? How about looking at if we could spread that out with the commercial rates?
Mayor, I think that's entirely possible. I don't think it's the venue, the forum, to try and negotiate those terms here.
Right, I agree.
But if I got your direction, that you wanted that as one of your goals, I think that would really be welcome, and I think it's something that we could make happen for you. We'd like to keep the rate impact on the residents to an absolute minimum, and that might be one way we could help get there. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilman Wu.
Yeah, okay, on the 1383 compliance, okay, is the due date what, June 30th?
Well, we're already past due.
I remember it's June 30th. They extended.
Yeah.
January, but they extended to June 30th.
And we've already applied through our state legislatures for some time consideration and further delay. The mayor sent a letter, I believe it was in March, and so far, we've gotten crickets for response. But I think, I think they're going to continue to.
My question, city manager, my question, because I joined the COG, okay, we got in the meeting, okay, as I remember, January, the due date, but they give a six-month extension to June 30th.
Yes.
Am I right?
Yes.
So, so, so we only have two weeks by June 30th, and the fine is, okay, and $10,000 a day if we don't comply, we don't comply to the organic, am I right, Stephanie?
We, we were on a conference call with the CalRecycle people. They barely mentioned fines because we are moving responsibly toward implementation. That's a tool that they are holding in reserve. We don't want to get there, and we think we can get into compliance before the state will actually begin to levy fines, but that's a threat they have, a tool they have.
So the question is, okay, by June 30th, we should have some compliance implement into this organic waste recovery. So in that way, right now, we still have an issue with the charge with the Athens. We haven't got, okay, and the number, okay, we prefer. So in that way, I don't think we can make it in time by June 30th to get the number both sides possible can agree upon. We, we here to try to see, protect, okay, and present, okay, their pocket by the same time. We need to see their costs, so to be fair by both sides. But at the same time, we want to be, study the number, make sure this number there with fairness. So, so the COG with the implement possible, since they pay by the CalRecycle, so we can implement without the fine, okay, or the threat from the CalRecycle, by the same time, we can still see what we can work out with Athens without too much of a time pressure by June 30th. Because I, right now, I don't think we can come up to agreement with this two option. Make sense?
A question about the grant. Are we waiting on a response from CalRecycle about whether or not we could use that for the COG agreement?
Correct.
Do they, do we have any indication when they'll respond? Or silence, just like my letter?
We reached out to them recently, so it's not non-responsive yet.
How was that grant written? I mean, was it so vague that we really have no clue, or?
The grant is written, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, for outreach and education, and it included monies for equipment that we would like to reallocate for this program if possible.
Again, I joined a COG meeting regarding a 1383 study section, okay, and they give grant based on the population, okay, and I think I sent you guys a copy regarding the meeting I had, okay, and regarding the grant, we need to apply it in the due time. And I remember you guys apply. I said now, because they have a time limit, you to apply right away, okay, and yes, go ahead.
Yeah, we did apply, we did get, we actually did receive the monies. We actually, I think, got more than we had thought we would, and so we, we just want to ensure that we can reallocate those funds, and it won't be an issue with the grant monies. We don't anticipate it being, but until we get confirmation. Also, as mentioned, we do have alternative funding for the program if we can't use that grant money.
So, so if we implement the COG program, because they have a model including Covina, okay, Azusa, okay, quite a lot of city are joining this COG program, and it endorsed by the COG, Council of Government, so I think we can have CalRecycle over our back. At the same time, she, they will pay us. So I think this possible is a solution. We, we don't, okay, rush to make a decision, jump into something that possible, okay, and not a good deal, okay, and at the same time, we need to find a fairness for both sides.
Councilman Wu, do you remember from your COG meetings, did they mention if that would be, if the grant money would be usable for their program?
Because that time, we didn't ask that question possible, because Alex is the person put this together. I think you can just call him up. He's willing to give you all the information. I think he is the person put all this so-called Alliance City together, okay, and I, I listen and I study. I think it's possible can kind of help in this due time and to comply with what the state, okay, want the 1383. So in that way, and we can comply with the organic, with inspection, education, okay, So anyway, I moved the motion to go to the COG and direct staff to continue negotiate with the Athens, okay, to find a common ground. This is my motion.
Councilman Wu, and if you could reach out to the COG, to your contact, to ask the questions, just to move it along.
Yeah, they have, gave it all the information already.
Okay, then if staff could do that, I agree with your motion, but I would like to request at least strong emphasis to look at alternative options of how to work with Athens related to not hitting the residents entirely. I think that may be, and, and also taking out the graffiti and, and medians and.
Just thirteen eighty-three?
Just thirteen eighty-three, and different options, just so we could get a deal done. I think we've dragged this out long enough. It's been tough with dealing with these state regulations, and Councilman Wu, if you are okay with that.
I'm okay.
I'll second that.
I'm okay.
I want to make sure I have the recommend, the recommendation clear. We have a recommendation for option one.
COG.
Which is option one, and option three, which is to continue to negotiate with Athens.
All right.
Correct, yeah, in the, the fashion I mentioned, the original details were that the residents would take the full cost increase a hundred percent. So the change would be that we look at alternative options, so, including commercial.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Mayor Costellanos. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos?
Aye. That's a five-zero, so let's try to get the deal done. Thank you. Takes us to the end of the agenda. Councilmember reports, requests, and comments. Any, any comments or reports or requests by anyone? No. Oh, well, you, you did, thank you, did mention to me that you had a personal connection to the tragedy that occurred next door in Almani, so I'll let you take the floor and explain that, and I'll let you have the adjournment.
Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the floor, and, and thank you for allowing us to adjourn in honor of Corporal Michael Paredes and Officer Joseph Santana. You know, Almani has been a, a very special space in, in my life. I had the honor of coaching number four, Joseph Santana, while he was a student at El Monte High School. I had the honor of having his wife Sasha serve as our stat girl for four years. I've had the honor of working with his stepfather, Officer Joe Garcia, as our SRO for, I think, since I've been at Almani. Almani is a very special space, a very complicated history. It is a place that I think a lot of people just drive through, drive by, but it's a community with a lot of pride, a lot of fight, a lot of ganas. They, they love each other, they take care of each other. It's, I know, it's been very hard for that community, for all of us, all of us Lyon family, Royal Knights, everyone involved with that city. I know that we have many officers in WCPD who had many close connections and just, I know we as a city, city of West Covina, we support and we love our sister city of Almani, and to the families and to all the residents of Almani, just from the city of West Covina, just want to send our love, our support, and again, Mayor, want to say thank you for allowing us to adjourn tonight in the honor of, of Officers Paredes and Santana, and I'll always remember you, number four. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wu?
Yeah, I want to follow up, okay, Councilmember Tabatabai, regarding this horrific, okay, tragedy, okay, and two of young officers, okay, and sacrificed themselves for the public safety, okay, and I talked to chief yesterday, and, and I said, can I give you a suggestion and to talk to all officer, and when they respond to domestic violence, they need to extra cautious, okay, and make sure, okay, they, they not walking potentially trapped, okay, and we do not want this kind of thing happen in any places, okay, especially in West Covina, so make sure our officer, okay, they, they know how to protect themselves and domestic violence, because I've been reading a lot of shooting, a lot of officer fatal shooting all from domestic violence, okay, and so want to make sure they approach with extra cautious, okay, and we want to make sure our officer safe and go back to their family. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'll echo the sentiment. Sad day in our history when that occurred, and let's hope we could keep our officer safe and out of this kind of harm. Do I have any other comments before we adjourn?
No, I actually grew up in Almani, so it's heartfelt, and they are our sister city, but I am glad that you spoke to the chief and also protect our officers. I know the officers are there to protect and serve, which we thank you, but, you know, we should also protect and serve them, so, you know, anything that you can do to protect our officers, because I know domestic violence did increase, especially with COVID, so that's high on the rise, and just, everybody's just on, on edge, and, and, you know, we feel it, I see it with families where I work, so just careful, everyone, and thank you. That's it.
Go ahead.
I just want to, my heart goes out to the families of the fallen officers. It's heartbreaking to see the mother, you know, crying, and it was so sad to see her displaying her grief, and my heart goes out to all our police officers that are out there, you know, risking their lives, and I just want to thank you for your service, and thank you for protecting us and always keeping us safe, and thank you.
Thank you. With those thoughts, memories, we'll adjourn this meeting. Good night, everyone.